Ah ah ah. Test one two and two. Good, how are you?
Good evening. I call this February 27th meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching a recording of this meeting. On March 4th, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.morrisvillnc.gov/government. Sergeant Lori Strickland has 15 years of law enforcement experience and 13 years with the town of Morrisville. She has served on the Crisis Intervention Team and has received Officer of the Year recognition several times. She is currently assigned to the Patrol Division and is the supervisor of the 40 Squad. We are grateful for her presence with us this evening as our sergeant-at-arms. I will deliver the indication this evening. Neighbors, as we gather tonight, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge our town's adopted values, the principles that guide our community: dedication, integrity, courtesy, and innovation. Dedication fuels the tireless efforts of our Morrisville team members, council, and volunteers who work to make Morrisville a vibrant and thriving town. May their commitment inspire us to contribute our own time and talents towards the betterment of our community. Integrity is the cornerstone of trust and respect. May it guide our actions in all aspects of life, from our personal dealings to our civic engagement. Let us strive to be truthful, transparent, and accountable in every word and deed. Courtesy creates a sense of community and belonging. May we treat each other with kindness, understanding, and respect regardless of background or belief. Let us remember that every interaction, big or small, has the power to shape the character of our town. Innovation is the engine that drives progress. May we embrace creative solutions, celebrate new ideas, and collaborate to build a brighter future for Morrisville. Let us continue to think outside the box and find ways to serve our community. With these values as our compass, let us, each of us here tonight, contribute to our discussions with an open mind, a kind heart, and a collaborative spirit. If you are able, please stand as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, I'd like to recognize our town manager, Brandon Zudma.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Two requests, Mayor. One would be to add a third closed session for land acquisition discussion. And then beyond that, we'd also like to ask for a moment of privilege to let our town attorney introduce one of his staff that you don't normally get to see to you, but is doing a lot of work for you.
Attorney Gregg.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, it's my pleasure to introduce Abigail Breedlove here in the second row. Abby works with me and Lori in our law firm. And she's recently been working on any project you name in Morrisville, from Fire Station Number Three to Jay Morris Commons Lane and the connection to the Fuji film and the Morrisville Carpenter Road pedestrian safety signal, the Southern Lot Extension and all the easements and cross-easements to get there. So she's our commercial real estate expert. And I wanted her to come out and so you could see her and say hello to her and understand that there's a lot of folks that work on a lot of things, just like all of your departments behind the scenes that make things happen. Abby is a native of Rocky Mount, and she started out her career as a paralegal with the law firm there. Decided she wanted to go on to law school. She's got an undergraduate degree in speech pathology from East Carolina, and she graduated from law school at Campbell University and has been with our firm for several years now. So she had the opportunity to drive around and see some of the places and kick some of the tires that she's been working on today before the council meeting. So I wanted you all to meet Abby Breedlove. Thank you.
That's great to see you in person. I'm glad you got a chance to see the things that you've been working on. Hopefully, you'll be pleased. Excellent. Thank you all. Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Okay? I would entertain a motion to adopt this evening's agenda with that third closed-session item added, please.
I make a motion that we adopt this evening's agenda, adding the third closed-session item.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Rao, a second from Councilmember Johnson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously.
Mayor, sir, if I could, just for the record, would ask that that be item 15B and that 15C become your third closed session.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Do we need another motion, or are we good? Okay. Thank you very much. There are three items on this evening's consent agenda: resolution authorizing a federal emergency management agency equipment grant application; resolution authorizing the town manager to sign Duke Energy easement for Church Street Park Southern Lot; and approval of January 2024 Town Council meeting minutes. Would any council member like to pull any of these items for discussion before we consider adoption? Okay. Is there a motion, a second, to adopt this evening's consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
A motion from Councilmember Johnson and a second from Mayor Pretam Caramella. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That also carries unanimously. We have two presentations tonight: a proclamation recognizing Read Across America Day and a Town Center amenities update. And I will read the proclamation. This is recognizing March 2nd, 2024, as Read Across America Day, whereas the town of Morrisville has countless families who value reading and continuing education, and whereas March 2nd, 2024, is the birthday of Theodore Geisel, also known as Dr. Seuss, and is recognized as National Read Across America Day. And whereas the Morrisville Town Council would like to encourage everyone to read as much as possible, and would like to share the following poem in honor of National Reading Day. "Old Mr. Morris asked, 'What do we need to make a good living, to thrive, to succeed? Here in our town, with bits and e-bites crisscrossed by trains and overhead flights, we need lots of data and fiber to send it, and light-driven optics in order to bend it into our homes and onto our screens, and when it arrives, to learn what it means. We read it, my friends, for our comprehension, unlocking new worlds too wondrous to mention. So pick up a book, or a tablet, or phone; transport your whole family to a magical zone, where words convey vision, sharp tastes, and bright sounds, and new thoughts and creative ideas all abound." Now therefore, the Town Council of the town of Morrisville does hereby proclaim March 2nd, 2024 as Read Across America Day in the town of Morrisville, North Carolina, and thank those who participate in this event." And we're very fortunate that at this time, I'd like to invite Helen Yamamoto, Morrisville Library Branch Manager, and Burt Battin, Principal of Morrisville Elementary, to come forward to receive a copy of the proclamation. Exactly. Stand here.
Thank you so much.
Want to hold those up for Laura? Helen, would you like to share anything about the library and the goings-on?
Yeah, well, first, I want to thank you for recognizing the importance of reading and for giving us the honor, the library, the honor of holding one of these proclamations. I want to point out that reading is the most important thing you can do to build your child's literacy, and that early literacy starts at birth. So the libraries have programs for children starting at birth, and children need to see you reading, too. It's important for them to see that reading is a lifelong habit and joy. So we welcome all of you to come to the library. We have adult programs, children's programs, and everything in between.
Excellent. And Principal Battin is the largest Mustang of the Morrisville Mustangs, the leader of the Mustangs, leader of the pack.
Thank you, Mayor. This is exciting, and our kids are eager to kick off National Reading Month throughout all of March. And it's wonderful to have the support of mayor and town council, and even many of the employees of the town who volunteered at the school over this past year, as reading volunteers, coming in as guest readers from the town police department and fire department, really helping to foster this love of learning and reading for our kids. Really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
At this time, we will have an update on the Town Center amenities facilitated by Town Manager Brandon Zudma.
Good evening again, Mayor and council. I'm going to ask Cameron Lassiter and Fred Belladen with Clearscapes to join us, and I'm going to turn it over to them actually very shortly to proceed through this. So we were before you on January 23rd and shared some imagery and some concepts with you. You provided some very useful feedback on that, and since that time, we have continued to meet weekly with this team to make sure that we are guiding towards what we heard from you and what we know you'd like to see in this project, particularly related to the entrance to the town green, as well as the pockets along the side and other facets of that. So I'm going to turn it over to Fred and Cameron to walk through what they've done with the information you provided, what the information that we've provided and shared with them. And I'll tell you, I'm very pleased with it. They're very, as I think you've already seen, but they're very, very good at having a conversation with us and turning that into concepts and imagery and things that I know we couldn't get on our own. So I'm going to turn that over.
Good evening. We're thrilled to be back again with all of you. As Town Manager noted, we received great feedback last time, and we've been busy incorporating that feedback into some new concepts to bring back today. We are happy to proceed at kind of a high level to introduce you to the new ideas, and we can take questions section by section as we go, or if you prefer to wait till the end to circle back in more detail.
It's totally up to you, sir.
Okay. First slide up on the screen is just a reminder of the program that we've been working with to date. There aren't any substantive changes to what we saw last month in January. And again, a reminder that we'll be focusing on three areas for our conversation today. One at the north end, in orange, is the entry, the primary entry to the park. Second area is the porch area at the south end of the park, and then also in blue, the pockets to the west. As always, we've been working from the words that you provided to each of us, and a couple of the broader concepts that we've started to embrace as we've moved ahead is really thinking about the idea of your community as a crossroads. Obviously, first founded at the nexus of roads between Raleigh Chapel Hill and Hillsborough, officially founded as one of the stops in the North Carolina Railroad's inaugural railroad leg between Goldsboro and Greensboro. And even today, really, as a community crossroads, you've been wildly successful at bringing together people of different backgrounds, faith, and culture, and really creating a sense of community around that. Jumped ahead a little bit here, highlighting some of those key words. And then also, next slide, really thinking about how do we embrace that idea of a community crossroads and how we express it in innovative, progressive, and artistic, fun, and festive So first area we're going to touch base on is the south end of the park, which is the porch. This is similar in layout to what you saw previously. You'll note that we've been working with town staff on reshaping the paving area around the porch to really create multiple points of entry and focus into the lawn as well as into the grove. And then we're maintaining that parking and access path for loading, unloading, and emergency, as well as maintaining the support and education garden area in the corner. We've also been working with staff on really some imagery and some thoughts on what the porch canopy would want to be. And with that, we've been embracing ideas, again, of that community crossroads with multiple points of access and entry into it, and starting to bring together some ideas of nature and organic qualities, as well as technology and forward-thinking concepts.
And so a few of the elements that we've been working on developing are the roof form and the columns, and created a 3D view for you all of the updates. This one's taken from the lawn looking south through to the grove behind it. And as you can see, we're looking at the roof form as a way to promote openness of the overall form by curving it and curving the corners upward to make it feel really open and inclusive. The columns, we are locating in a way to promote free flow between, as Fred mentioned, as a way to free flow throughout the space below it. The size and the quantity of the columns have been adjusted a little bit as well, and we're using those to really tie it into nature and the growth beyond and really imitate We wanted to use a few images to highlight what Fred was talking about earlier with the concept and creating this overall park feel and concept that is cohesive throughout. And what you see highlighted, the columns that are highlighted in green here, we are using as abstracted forms from certain views to create these abstracted ends that you can see from different areas throughout the park, and we'll highlight those as we move along throughout the rest of the presentation as well.
We always like to backcast and forecast, and if you look over your left shoulder, we've always been drawn to the pretty unique bell tower at one of your historic churches, so you'll see some of the same geometries echo throughout the project.
One thing that's a little bit different, we had a little bit different of a roof form before. In the idea to promote more openness, we've created a lighter profile of this roof form, and what that changed is that the equipment and the lighting and all of that will sit below the roof form now. So that's what you can see there with those tresses. Just a few additional views. View A is taken from, where you can see it on the key plan there, looking at the side profile of the porch. And View B is actually taken from where the greenway enters the park. So that is a pretty prominent view, and you can see on that corner, that back corner, where you can see that abstracted end from that side as well.
The second area that we wanted to discuss with all of you tonight, which we know is near and dear to your hearts, is the north end of the park and introducing some of the concepts of the integrated art and public art and water feature. So you're looking at kind of an updated plan here. We're looking at splitting that north end into multiple smaller plazas to create opportunities for different smaller gathering groups, as well as opportunities for introducing seasonal display and activity. And in the middle, you'll see focused in the dark gray is really what we're going to start showing images of. Again, that idea of crossroads, using the public art and using the water feature as a way to create multiple portals and entries into the space and to create multiple viewpoints from the surrounding landscape.
We've included a few inspiration images and precedent images. Some of these you may recognize from our previous presentation. On the top right, we wanted to show how similar forms and similar sculptures could be integrated with the MIST system and what that could look like, and those are similar scale to what we are looking at with these arches. We're still working on the overall materiality and the overall design of these arches, but we wanted to include some images of what we're looking at direction-wise, which would be a perforated metal, which you can see on these lower right-hand images. That's actually at Fenton and Cary, and it was a canopy that they used their logo design to create a really nice pattern of light and shadow. So maybe something similar, because I think the overall goal for these is that even when the water's not running, they still look like large, nice, public art. The plazas, like Fred said, are pretty similar to what the design was before. They have integrated seating, as you can see, and integrated landscaping to create these smaller zones of intimate seating. of intimate seating. We've created a few 3D images of this area as well. This one's taken from, kind of as an aerial above the intersection. So you're looking south towards the lawn. And just to give you an idea of the scale of these arches, we're showing six of them here, and they're varying in size, but they're approximately 18 feet on average in height. And you can see, we've highlighted on these as well where you have, depending on where you're standing and where the view is, an abstracted M as well. And we wanted to include an image that could show seasonality and what it could look like with holiday tree and the menorah in that area.
We know that cost is an important consideration for all of you. So we've approached the water feature and the public art kind of as a scalable element. So what you're seeing here is a rough order of magnitude cost for all six arches together at $425,000. And then we've got opportunities for introducing a mist system for two, four, or six arches with a cost range. So between the number of arches and the number of arches that receive the water feature, we've got some scalability in being able to work with whatever the budget ends up being for the project. Any specific questions on this so far? Would you like to wait till the end?
Do you want questions or input at this time?
Either.
Okay. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share with what we've seen so far? Any questions? Recognize Councilmember Moverbody, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
It doesn't seem like we're realizing any opportunities of scale here with the pricing. Is that, you know, I would kind of, I guess I would expect, maybe I'm wrong, that if we're doing, you know, excavation, plumbing, electrical contracting, that the kind of, it would sort of be front-loaded, the cost, and then if we're doing it for, you know, like the next two and then the next two, that it wouldn't be, like, it wouldn't be, there would be kind of some economies of scale. But I, I don't know, I guess I'm, I guess I'm not seeing that as much as I would expect. Do you, do you have any thoughts on that?
So for instance, if you look at the cost of the mist system, you know, running at about $236,000 for two arches, that's incorporating all of the pumps, the equipment room, a lot of the, not the treatment, but some of the base lighting. And you'll note that at six arches, six arches, which is three times the number, you're at $420. So there is an economy of scale built into that, because yes, the tanks and the pumps may get upsized slightly, but really what you're paying for the difference there is the additional piping and nozzles and some of the additional lighting. And then similarly with the arches, we've got the total of six right there, so you won't necessarily realize, in other words, building two arches won't necessarily be one-third of that total.
Yeah.
Because there'll be some design and engineering built into it, but there's a similar economy of scale.
And do we, if we decided, like, right now, we're going to do a mist system on two arches, then, for example, if we then decided two years later that we wanted to upgrade and do another two, would we be closer to that $235,000 to do the next two, or would we be closer to the difference between these two, which is about $80,000, $100,000?
It's a great question. So I think that's something we can go back to the fountain consultant with, but we can build some future proofing into it. For instance, we might oversize the pump and the tanks a little bit for larger number of future arches and run stubs out to some of the additional arch locations to allow you to introduce nozzle systems in the future if you don't necessarily add them now. But honestly, that degree of nuance, we'd have to get a little more into it.
Yeah, sure.
To understand. But knowing that future proofing may be a goal, that's something we can work to accommodate.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, followed by Councilmember Johnson, please.
My mic is on, just letting you know.
Thank you.
So thank you so much for bringing back a water feature that we had requested and including art. So it's like a beautiful way to kind of celebrate the town. And looking at the pricing, which is a very relevant point that you bring forward, it does look like, for me, the economies of scale have been met, and I know how many small children, including myself, sometimes would appreciate water. And if we only had two arches, that would be really tightly packed with a lot of people, and it might not be as fun and enjoyable of an experience as if we had multiple structures that offered water. So I'm actually leaning towards all six arches having the water. If we find that that is too much, we can always turn them off, as opposed to trying to reinstall with higher equipment costs, higher installation costs. If you do it at the same time, then you're actually reaping a little bit more of efficiency in that. So that's where I'm looking right now, is that there's efficiencies in doing the installation for all of them at the same time with a startup. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson, please, followed by myself, and then Councilmember Caramella.
So I actually have a, I'm going to talk about the misters, too, for a minute, but I want to go back to the porch. And remind me, we talked about the fact that we would have programming on both sides, right?
Right.
So that's, that's still in the design.
Yes.
And, thank you. And then the portion that faces the major part of the green space, is that raised high enough? Because we talked about that, too. I just want to make sure it, it doesn't look like that in the diagram to me, but I just want to make sure that you, you took all of that into consideration.
We did. And the driving factors, if it helps, are, right now, the stage is shown 30 inches above the lawn. And that is, working with town staff, there is interest in having a flat edge rather than stairs up for a portion of it to designate a formal stage. 30 inches represents the maximum height we can do without a guardrail by the building code.
Okay.
So there is still some flexibility as we're going through with grading here. We could raise it a little higher, with stairs in front. But knowing that that's an important consideration for you, we can continue to work with your team on that.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that. And then, I like the porch, by the way. That, I like the M's that you kind of, I was going to say hidden. They're not, they are kind of in, sort of kind of hidden, but, but visible at the same time. So, and especially in the arches, too. And I guess a lot of the questions have already been asked about the arches and whether we can kind of phase in later or not. And I might be thinking along the same lines as Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, where if we're going to do it, let's do it. Is this something we need to decide with the mister system? Is something we need to decide tonight? Can we say, let's go ahead and do all six arches, and then as we move on down further through the project? Or are we, are we at a point where we have to make the decision tonight and move on?
So that is an interesting and thought-provoking question.
I think the town manager might have a thought.
Let me jump in. So I think what we are looking for is that level of direction tonight, because I think where we're at, and the SING team can help us with that, Clearscapes can help us, but we are likely pushing a little bit on our timeline just from getting into this level, which is incredibly important. So that's, that's just that we need to do this. But we had talked about April in terms of being able to come back to you with a cost, a rough estimate, a pre-construction estimate, but I think we're probably leaning into May now, given where we're at timing-wise. So, and none of this has to happen immediately, but again, trying to keep this moving, ideally break ground probably early 2025. And the other thing is, that's what, what Clearscapes really needs, what SING really needs to get further into what is the final design, what is this going to cost. So there's certainly going to be tweaking to be done along the way, but I would say that if there is a comfort level tonight, that you all have consensus around what you're being shown, or minor tweaks to what you're being shown, that would be advantageous.
Okay. Then I'm comfortable with what I'm seeing tonight, too, by the way.
I was going to say, if it helps with the thought process, we can always plan to design for six, and six with water, but build in some deduct alternates into the pricing. So you've got some flexibility.
Okay. No, I'm, I'm good, and thank you for including our M where you could. Appreciate that.
So myself, followed by Mayor Pretem Caramella. So talking about the misters, who's mentioned the possibility of turning on only four of the six if we install all, is that, can that be done? Is that something?
I believe so. Again, we'll want to check with the fountain consultant, but I believe we can put them on, on separate loops or circuits.
Okay. Because having all six might, if it's really windy, get onto the path or something like that. So I'd love to have the flexibility to do that. I'd love also, if possible, to have different colored lighting ability. A lot of fountains have that type of thing. Going back to the porch, I really feel, I'd like to understand a little bit more about 30 inches. There'd have to be a guardrail at the front of the stage if we go above 30 inches?
It alters how we have a stage front. We would probably want to stare up across the front of the stage to avoid a 30-inch drop. As long as we run stairs in there, it's a way to do it. There's always a trade-off between making it approachable and having the audience get, oh, sorry, the performers close to the edge of the stage versus the height.
Okay. I'd be very interested in staring up and having the stage be higher. I think that Cary Downtown Park, I think that would be important, because if the stage is not really visible to people in chairs, because that's what a lot of people have chairs. So that would, I'd be very interested in that. So the tresses on top, they would, you mentioned, they'd help with lighting. They'd also be able to suspend like a film screen so we could do movies.
That's correct.
Things like that. So that's really great. That's really multipurpose. I'm sure that we're going to do lots of movies there. If we could go back to slide 13, this is more of a really small thing, but I really liked on the bottom right, the word explore, which is down on the floor. That might be, help with our placemaking throughout the town center to have kind of, do you see it on the bottom right?
Right there.
She's circling that right there. That's, things like that are just such a nice touch, which I'd be really interested in. I like the six misters, as was suggested. And that's, those are my thoughts about it. Really great job bringing back the idea and having a water feature in this phase, I think is very pleasing. At this time, Mayor Pretem Caramella, followed by Councilmember Fender.
Thanks, mayor. I wanted to go back to the stage. Will we be having a green room with this design?
Want to go back to the plan? So there is a small, if you look down where Cameron's cursor is at the support building, there is a small green room built into the support building.
Okay. It's not as part of the stage?
That's correct.
Okay. And where will the restrooms be in proportion to that?
We have, there will be dedicated restrooms within the green room for performer use, and then we will have the public restrooms where Cameron's cursor is in the middle that you set up.
And, and not going into the weeds, but the music system is a critical piece, because is this something that the individual parties will bring their own music and set it up? Or is it something that the town will have? The reason I'm asking is, you don't want someone with very high-powered speakers, you know, completely blowing off the whole area versus using the town ones, which are angled correctly and put in a certain direction so that the voice is taken care of.
So the town will have options on that, and I think that will be a big part of the April budget discussion. There is a spectrum of approaches. One option is you provide the tresses only and a minimal amount of lighting and sound, and it's brought in by the performers, which, as you noted, puts you at the mercy of whatever they're bringing. The other extreme end of the spectrum is that you own a fully functional system, including lighting, sound, and projection. And there are variations in between where you have a basic system, but it can be supplemented by performers. So again, knowing that that's important to all of you, we'll make a focus on that as part of the budgeting as we move forward, so we can present some opportunities.
Yeah, because as much as we are focusing on all the stage, I want to be also cognizant of the neighbors around and not blow up, because amphitheater and Kokabut, people like half a mile, they can still hear all the concerts going on, different speakers going. And regarding the mist, how much of water will be, you know, I'm assuming it's not recyclable anymore, because once the mist, the water is, is gone. So is there a huge water bill? Or is, is that the best use of water, like misting?
So the absolute most efficient water use is a fog system, but it introduces additional equipment, which adds cost, and it's more of a maintenance hassle. So the mist is the best compromise to create the most dramatic effect while minimizing water use. I don't, we don't have that slide with the actual...
I don't remember the numbers, but it's much less than half of jets.
If it's something of interest to you, we can run a nozzle calc for all six arches and a gallons-per-minute flow and share it with you.
Yeah. The only reason I'm thinking back of my mind is if that amount of water, which is getting used, and the cost, is mist or the right approach or a water feature, you know, like a full-blown water feature, because the cost pretty much is the same, with everything washing in. So I just wanted to see that, because maintenance cost is also something we want to do it. And, yeah, and, and the timings will be like, will the mister be temperature-controlled? Because sometimes you may have it more colder, and, you know, regarding October or sometime, it is still warm.
So to help provide an order of magnitude for you, conventional jet runs at five gallons per minute. A mister runs at .25 gallons per minute.
But how many misters is the question around the whole day?
It's a good question. So for one jet, let's do the math. So you can get 20 misters per one jet, for equivalency in terms of water use. And, I don't remember how many misters. We might be, I think we're looking at somewhere between 20 and 30 misters per arch as we look at that, so.
Okay. And, and also, we talked about last time, some kind of open space, if at all, could be used for ice skating on this one. So the arch, which is on the circle, can that be used?
We have done some looking at that. The challenge with ice skating is it really wants to be a very flat space. We don't have any very flat spaces in this particular part of downtown, of the downtown park. So we can look at it, but it's going to be small, and it will be less than optimal in terms of the sloping on the site.
A lot of conversation about that after it was brought up. I do think that that's something that may be a better fit for a future phase of this project, where you can dedicate that flat space, because I think what you look at here is, you're really sort of trying to fit a square peg in a round hole to do a meaningful-sized ice rink here, whereas you may have that opportunity in a future phase where you could potentially link it to, you know, if you're going to do a community center or some type of town building there, there's opportunities there, whereas I think you're really trying to force it here on top of adding the water back into this.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. That's all. Thank you. And last but not the least, I forgot, it was the holograms. Can any of the holograms be used with the mister, like, or at the stage, if we can point down the M as a hologram?
Okay. Interactive lighting.
Yeah. That would be really cool to have that. Thank you.
And also, about the temperature, when it gets to a certain point, it'll just essentially turn off, right?
So there are a range of control system types. Usually, it's a program system, and your, your town maintenance staff will control it.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay. Councilmember Fender, please.
Just a couple of questions. Maybe I missed this, but with the porch, where you guys highlighted the, those legs in green and with the arches that are green, is the intent that that would be painted green, or are you just highlighting those?
We are highlighting it only to help illustrate some of the underpinning of the concept.
Okay.
The materiality and the color scheme would be developed in concert with your team as we move forward in the design process.
Okay. And what, what is the material used for those arches? What, assuming it's metal?
Yes.
What type of metal?
So we are back and forth between stainless steel and aluminum currently. We are, if you are interested in color, we would most likely be looking at a powder-coated aluminum system for those, because we want to be careful for corrosion resistance with the water system. Stainless is an option, but it tends to be heavier and more costly.
Okay. And then, I was just curious, in your sketches, you showed the structures being like triangles, but then in the 3D image, you showed them as being arches. Was there a reason for that? Was there a reason for that?
Just the difference between plan and section. So one of the concepts we talked about, the idea of the community crossroads, and one of the things that we're really enjoying about the park is the merging of your built landscape and the natural landscape. So playing with some of the similar themes and geometries, but allowing some to be more built form-like and some to be more organic.
Okay. All right, that was it.
Did anyone else have any thoughts on this section? Councilmember R.
Would there ever, would there be any kind of closed structure with this or is it going to be more open, like we do events and stuff? Or do you envision the events being more, can you go back a slide so I can look at the layout of the park? So like for events and stuff, do you see it being, obviously there's a stage area, right? But would there be any kind of enclosed structures or would it all be kind of open?
There are not any currently enclosed structures in the, in the design of the park. They're open canopies to allow for flexibility and rain protection.
Okay, all right. So, and, and most of my questions have been addressed. I really appreciate you all, including the water structure in this phase. The other question I have is when, when we're looking at this slide, which would be like the gateway or the main entrance to the park? Because I think it'd be nice for them to see the first structure being the water structure. Has that been decided yet or has, you know, we come in and they see it, Mooresville Park or whatever we call it, which would be the gateway?
It's a very good question. One of the slides you'll see coming up when we tackle the pockets is what's interesting about this park is you will have multiple points of entry depending on whether you're coming by vehicle, whether you're coming on foot or bike, where you live. So what we're trying to do is create different experiential opportunities at different entry points to the park. So the water feature and the art that we're looking at to us is more of the formal entry, which is why we're putting the emphasis there. But similarly, if you look, do you want to point to the crosswalk from the greenway? That's coming from one of your major greenway trails there, which is why we've looked at how the porch will appear from that vantage point. And then even you'll see some other walkways to the west side depending on where you cross, where we might be looking at some low walls and signage. So we think there are a variety of entrance points into the park, and we're trying to tailor the experience of each one to reflect the local characteristics.
I think we're ready to move on to the next section. Town manager?
If I could, before we move away from the, the porch concept, I'd like Mary to just offer a few words for you, if that's right. You had mentioned some question about steps up versus maybe having the stage there, and I think she has a, she has a vision for that, and she's worked through that, I think is worth sharing with you.
Please.
Good evening, and I'm also just interested in, in your feedback as well. But the intent there was to define a front of the stage and to separate walk-up connection. If you look there on the sides where the Clearscapes team has delineated, there are areas to the east and to the west and to the south where there are the steps that wrap around, but there's that delineation in the front that really sets it apart and says this is the focal point of the stage. So as staff has discussed it, our intent was to really define, this is a separation of where the crowd is and then where the performers are. We will definitely take in consideration what I've heard this evening about height, but I just wanted to share that with y'all as well, and then if you had any questions for me.
Sure. Councilmember Johnson?
So, yeah, thank you, Mary. And, and somebody said it as we were talking here tonight, and I'd forgotten about that, that the, when we talk about the ice skating rink, potential ice skating, that the lawn slopes, so there's already built-in natural tiering for seats. So maybe the stage really doesn't have to be as high as we think, that the, the surroundings take care of that for us. And I like, thank you for sharing that, Mary. That, that helps. I'm, I'm happy with the design.
And that helps me as well. It's just, I'm concerned like the downtown Cary Park has the steps, and I think their slope is probably sharper than ours in a smaller space. So we have a longer lawn, and if we're looking to entertain more people, but that's just my guess.
Well, that you waited.
Having been there, yeah. So if you could, that'd be wonderful. Thank you. Any other thoughts on what Mary shared with us? Okay. Thank you so much. Did you want to get confirmation on our affirmation of the arches, the jets and stuff at this point, or you want to do that at the end?
How about we circle back at the end and maybe we'll summarize what we believe our, our work points forward are.
Okay, thank you, sir.
It's freezing, I'm sorry. Getting a preview.
So as we've thought about the pockets, one of the things we wanted to bring to the table was an understanding of how the town green fits within your broader context of recreational opportunities. So the little diagram that you're seeing to the right, you can see where the Healthy Food Hub and Education Garden is, which is really the site of the town green. And what's nice is you have Indian Creek Trailhead within a quarter-mile, which is a conventional playground. We have the future dog park that you're working on, and obviously we've got connections to a range of greenway trails. So sort of to your earlier point about where the main entrance is, we think it really depends on where you're approaching it from and what you happen to be doing that day. But with that in mind, what we liked about the pockets was always trying to provide a counterpoint or another opportunity to existing opportunities. So given the existing playground within a quarter-mile, we saw the pockets as an opportunity to think about play a little differently and to really merge that idea of nature and play together.
These are some images of some products that we are looking at to talk about this natural play area. And what you'll see on the, the plan diagram that's in the center there is that we've interspersed some areas of play with clusters of seating around them for parents, for people that are looking at the lawn, if there's a show going on at the stage, things like that. The areas of play are focused primarily in the center of the pocket, right through here, and are directly adjacent to the lawn for visibility. But the materiality of them, of these products in particular tie them to the nature and the wood of the pockets and all the trees that would be the backdrop to these play spaces. So this is a 3D view taken. You can see this blue arrow right here. It is one of the entrances, maybe one of the minor entrances to the park, looking at across the play space through to the lawn. And so you can get a feel for the scale of some of these play spaces and structures and what the seating could be, could look like in these areas. And zooming in a little bit further at some of these, we have three individual play structures that we're looking at from this Earthscape brand, and we're looking at alternates as well. But if you're looking at a natural wood product, there's, there's a few equivalents. So this one is, we have a rough order of magnitude cost of $75,000 for this particular one. And then a little bit of a scaled-down product next to it is this log pile. And then some play, playposts and log steppers. And as a cluster, this one's $15,000. So looking at everything all together, we are, the seating included, you're just under $180,000 for this area, just to put some numbers to it.
And also to be clear, these are all individual products and selections can vary, but what we're trying to show tonight is a mix of scales and types of play integrated with seating and provide an understanding of what something of this scope might run as an order of magnitude cost. So with that, I mean, obviously we would love feedback on things that you like, don't like necessarily, and also kind of that global budget conversation about what the interest is and what the, the goals are for the budget in this area.
At this time? Okay. Councilmember Abadi, followed by Councilmember R, please.
I don't, so, love this, love all of this. And two questions. First of all, what are they, I'm sorry if I missed it, but what are the, the sofas, the chairs, the coffee tables, what are they made out of? Are they comfortable? Like?
I'm guessing those are polypropylene, most likely, which is a plastic. Comfortable is a relative term, obviously, but, and that's why you'll see there's a mix of some more artful, organic like that, and then we've got some other more conventional aderent chairs.
And then I would appreciate anything that you can think of that would make these playgrounds more inclusive. You know, I, you know, that's just my personal hill to die on, right? But, but I do, you know, I, like, I love these and for, you know, for neurotypical children, children that aren't differently-abled, these are fantastic and I love them. But, you know, it's like, let's just try to think as inclusively as possible about the children that are going to be playing here and just, you know, and just, just kind of put that in the hopper. I would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
I just had two thoughts. The top right there, are we concerned about kids going so high that they're not safe or do they self-regulate?
They don't self-regulate.
I think there is some self-regulation. There is always a risk management question with playground, and we have spent a lot of time talking back and forth about scale. So I don't know if you have anything that you wanted to kind of.
So we have talked about the surfacing of being poor in play, which is ideal for impact. And then, of course, I'm not a playground safety inspector, but Kevin Kelly is on staff and looking at those heights, there are certain regulations that we'd also have that discussion with public works when we move to the actual selection of the materials or selection of the pieces.
Because like Shiloh Park, it has that high sphere now, but if you guys feel that's safe, and I love the poor in play, that's really good. Thank you very much. That lays my concern that, just that we brought it up. You said that the wood is durable. Is that natural, natural wood, like splinters and it's going to wear nicely or it's going maybe be a problem in five years?
It's designed to wear nicely. And so no splinters or anything. It's a product that you're purchasing specifically for this. It's not, and, and they come in a variety of types of wood, and it kind of depends on which material you're going with. But they're very durable.
And the bottom one, it looks like, are those climbing?
Yeah.
Sticks, so people will just climb those singularly? Okay. It looks very exciting. I, I support what I'm seeing here. It's really cool. I like that the chairs can be moved around and things like that. I think that's important as well. Mayor Protam-Garimella, followed by Councilmember Johnson?
My question regarding, I like the one on the top. It's pretty neat design. What about shade structures, you know, because of summertime? And I know the good thing is wood, it will not get heated up, the, the structure, but is there any plan to put a shade structure on top of it?
I think that's a great question. One of the things that we'll be exploring as we move into the next stage of the, of the design process is the potential for tree save or not. So understanding whether we're going to have some existing tree canopy to work with or not can factor into that, and if not, we can look at some shade structure opportunities as part of it. Again, I kind of want to reiterate that a lot of this will be budget-dependent overall and understanding what the priorities are.
Yeah, because, you know, if you're putting down $15,000, $20,000, those shade structures are not cheap either for these kind of things. So it's better to budget now than later saying, you know, because I, like, even the new schools, like Parkside Elementary, the school system makes the play equipment, but they will not give the shades. So the PTA had to, you know, put in money to get the shade structure. So I want people to use it even during daytime and especially a lot of homeschoolers or the kids who are preschool age to be able to come with their moms and, you know, play there.
Good feedback. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson, followed by Councilmember Fender?
So this was my favorite part of this presentation. I just love everything here. I love the fact that this is in, the, the play structures are kind of unique. I don't know, I'm not aware of anything that looks like this anywhere in the town of Mooresville or anywhere close by. So I, I love that. I love that there's a climbing structure and you can go underneath too. And so I, I love all this, and of course the seating is fabulous. The more seating we have, the better in this area. Thank you for that.
Councilmember Fender, please.
I would like to see the, the seating being made from recyclable, recycled plastic because I, I know that that's pretty prevalent these days. So I think it'd be easy to, to come by. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson, please.
This is very creative. I really like the idea. As a third grader in school, we had similar wooden kind of structures of which I had an accident. So we have to be careful about, you know, the type of materials and inclusivity with children that are not as mobile or have other challenges. It would be nice to see some simpler structures that would be more accessible and engage people. That would be great. And I do like the idea of exploring the cost of a shade structure because as we know, sun can be very, very intense. And even a wood-like structure like this could be very hot and not accessible during certain hours of the day. Otherwise, you could have injury that was related to hot surfaces. So that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Those are our comments at this time.
I think if you jump ahead one. So as a summary, to help ensure that we're all on the same page moving forward, maybe go to the next image. So what we're hearing is for the integrated water feature and art, we will explore proceeding with six arches, all with misters potentially with some VE or deduct alternatives if need be as pricing moves forward. For the play structure or the play spots, we will continue to explore selections, opportunities, continue to explore shade, and we will come back with a more detailed range of costs to allow that to fit within your overall performer. And for the porch structure, it sounds like we're on the right track in general. We will look in with great detail at opportunities across the spectrum for light, sound, and projection to allow you to make an informed choice from a budget perspective as we move forward with that. Does all that sound accurate?
That sounds accurate. Is there any of that that is slowing us down? Are you going to have to bring that back or you feel comfortable that we've given you enough direction? Because that's what I heard from the town manager, we want to give enough to just keep it moving.
I feel like there's enough. I think there are a couple areas. I think sound is one clearly to, we just haven't really gotten into that, but don't have to be into that right this second. That's a much easier process to work through, you know, pick A, B, or C as opposed to a lot of different items here. So, yeah, I think, I think we're all feel good about what we've heard tonight. It sounds like we're on the same page as far as what we're going to do with the water feature and the promenade with the porch, and then it sounded like pretty close to universal appreciation for what you were seeing in the pockets. So I think we're, we're in a good place.
Just wanted to confirm that fact. Excellent. Thank you very much. Great work.
Thank you all for your feedback. We really appreciate it.
Okay. At this time, we're going to move on to item nine, which is public address. Our interim town clerk, Parker Evans, will now present any public comments received.
There were no public comments received and no one signed up to speak.
Okay. We do have some people in the audience. Did anyone wish to address this body for up to three minutes on any subject of your choosing, but didn't sign up to do so? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you. There is one public hearing item on this evening's agenda. A resolution to withdraw a Part II grant for Crabtree Creek Nature Park project. Mark Spanioli, Director of Engineering, and Kyle Cooper, Capital Project Manager, will facilitate the item. Gentlemen?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. For the record, Mark Spanioli, Director of Engineering, and Kyle Cooper here as well. Item 2024-66 is a resolution in public hearing to withdraw a Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant for the Crabtree Creek Nature Park project. Fund grant for the Crabtree Creek Nature Park project. Let me give you a little bit of background just so we can get through it. Back in late 2020, the town was awarded the Partif grant and the amount of $500,000 to supplement the town funds for construction of the project. At that time, it was estimated at three and a half million dollars to proceed with the project. Shortly after, when we started getting into the design and permitting efforts, we realized that there had been some soil that had imported into the property by the prior owners and the town was going to be required to do some extensive permitting with Wade County. And this, this fill was brought onto the floodplain. So between 2021 and late 2023, we went ahead and did that permitting process with Wade County. We went ahead and completed the design of the project and we also put the project out the bid. When the bids came in, just recently at the end of 2023, the project was just under $6 million, which as you can tell is almost doubled compared to the original cost estimate of three and a half million. So due to market conditions outside of our control, as well as other competing project interests that the town has, it was determined the best course of action at this time was to put it on hold until other pending projects could be implemented. Based on this, the staff is recommending to withdraw from the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant award, and we provided this resolution for consideration. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Or Kyle? Have any questions before we go from the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and declare the public hearing open. I'd like to ask the interim town clerk to provide any public hearing comments received and recognize anyone signed up to provide in-person comments.
We have no comments at this time.
Okay. Is there anyone here in the room who wouldn't speak on this subject? Hearing none, if it's the will of the council, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion from Councilmember Johnson, a second by Councilmember Scroggins Johnson. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously seven zero. Do we want to have any discussion on this? We are set to take action on this at the March 12th, 2020, 24 meeting. Okay, no further discussion. We'll see you at our next meeting.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you both.
Good night.
We are scheduled, we're well ahead of schedule. So I'd suggest we just keep going, if that's okay with the council?
That's the spirit, everybody.
Okay, that's the spirit. We're going to keep going. Okay. There are two action items on this evening's agenda. A mural, mural design selection facilitated by Brittany Johnson, Planner Two, and a resolution adopting the Language Access Plan facilitated by Giselle Rodriguez, Deputy Town Manager. This time, I'd like to recognize Brittany Johnson to take us through what was a really fun activity last time.
Great. I'm hoping it'll be just as fun tonight. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm excited to be here again with you all tonight. I will provide a recap of where we left off with all of the murals for each location. And then we will go through some of your requested updates and alterations from there. It's my hope that we will again review all of the updates and then take questions from there. All right, without delay, I'll get started. For MAFC, you all had narrowed your selections down to these last two selections here, the first being Brit Flood with two votes and Sampada Agarwal with five votes. I also wanted to reiterate that this design by Sampada was selected and recommended by the Parks, Recs, and Cultural Resources Advisory Committee. For the Shiloh Park restroom building, we, you all did narrow, narrow it down to Ramon here, and he had four votes. And for Eric Davis, there were a total of three votes. You all did request one update for this design, and we'll see this on our next slide. So here at town council, again, you all requested that there was a minor alteration made to design that you requested that the artist were to take the figure highlight here and make this figure more racially ambiguous. You'll see here is the update that the artist has made incorporating multi-colors on this figure, and so that was their response. Again, this is one continuous design that will continue from the short side as you approach and then the long side to the rear of the building and then the short side again. And so this is facing the basketball court. For the fire administration building, this design was unanimously selected and this was completed by Mr. Max Dowdell. You all did request two updates. One, during our discussion, you requested that the linear footage along the Morristown Carpenter facade be extended. So the previous line is this blue line here, and so the new proposed linear extension is represented by the yellow line. As well, you all asked that the artist add the word Morristown to the design, and so you'll see those updates on the following page. So again, this is the original design here. This is the artist's update for option A, which is the addition of the word Morristown, as well as design being extended. And then here is option B, which is the original size but having Morristown added. As a part of your evaluation. So you will be again looking at artist's merit of design, the appropriateness of design for the location, including scale, content, color, and design in relation to the site, the concept, that the concept is reflected in the project, as well as artist qualifications and the originality of the design. Our next steps, again, you all will be making your selections tonight. We will notify our artists on Friday, and then we will go forward to our contract execution between March 4th and 14th. And then we'll have mural installation from March 15th to May 30th. A little on that contract. So with the contract, you'll, it is a professional services contract and it outlines our services to be formed, to be performed, the compensation, insurance requirements, and artists' responsibilities. And here's your motion language for tonight. I will come back to this slide after you all have a little more discussion on each location, and then we will go from there. But the motion language stipulates you will name one artist for each location, as well as authorizing the town manager to complete all contracts. Great.
That's good.
I will go back to our first location, and that's MAFC.
Would you like to facilitate the discussion or would you rather?
Yeah, so I will facilitate discussion. I know that you all left off with two votes for Brit Flood and five for Sampada Agarwal. I know that we did state that it does not have to be unanimous, so we'll go from there. If you all would like to start out with a little of discussion based on where you feel with the previous votes and if those have changed since that meeting, and if you have any questions about each piece that can help guide that, that's how I would like the format to kind of go.
I would share, I believe Ms. Agarwal's is fun and appropriate and would fit really well in that space.
I'll also note that there's a, a great level of detail to Ms. Agarwal's, as well as Ms. Flood. This location, you will have, it's at the entrance, so you'll be seeing it very closely. So that level of detail should be taken into account as well.
It's not just a drive-by like at the fire station, for example, is what you're saying. Councilmember Scroggins Johnson?
I like Ms. Agarwal's art. I liked it the first time, and I think that it really culturally matching.
I think, Mayor Pretend Garamello, then Councilmember Johnson?
I agree. I think Sampada Agarwal, she has done a great job other places, too. If I look at this particular, just the merit of it, you know, the one on the left, it's a huge structure. And when you walk my, you know, only if you see from the far, you can really get a feel of it, too. Whereas one on the right, there are like small, small intricacies that you can really walk through it without really not trying to get a hold of you from the back. I think the right side is more clean and the color schemes are good, especially the one going on the roof, too, with the sun on the top, and would be a good addition. The only question I have is, they will do all these things. What's the lifespan of these murals? You know, are they going to coat it with some clear coat or something? And what if someone vandalized it? Then what is, what is the workaround for that?
Yes. So mural lifespan expectancy ranges. However, we're looking at longer longevity. We're looking at anywhere from 10 to 15 years or more than that based on installation. So we're requiring all of the artists to do two coats of primer. They are doing graffiti coating, which will be placed on top of the design once it's completed. And so it will make sure that it will allow anything that's placed on top of that to be removed easily, as well as we do require UV resistant paint. That way, it will stand the test of time.
And obviously, it's entrance of MAFC. I'm assuming there are cameras and other things, too, so that in future, if something happens, it's getting monitored. I'm assuming that's. I don't know. That's more for town manager, like, yeah, okay. And the same thing for the, the fire department, too, I'm assuming. There's some kind of a.
I think the beauty of each location is that they're in highly visible areas, and I think that will contribute to that really swaying any form of vandalism.
Yeah, it would really hurt someone going into the fire station to do a graffiti compared to MAFC. And, and the other thing is also the shallow, like park, that's again, isolated area, that I'm more worried about that one, if anyone wanted to vandalize that. Just, I want to be very transparent because these are, a lot of effort is going in to doing that, and I just don't want some stupidity to basically ruin the whole essence of this art.
Yes. So that graffiti coating that will be applied to the piece will make it easier in the event that something were to happen, it would be easy to remove it.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Johnson, please.
So Brittany, first of all, you did a fabulous job at our last meeting, helping us walk around and do our two votes. And when I voted the first time, I voted for the mural on the left. And when we went through the second round, I, I, after hearing my fellow councilmembers, switched my vote to the, to the mural on the right. And I'm, I'm, I'm good with that. I think that it'll, it'll look fine on the building, and I'll go along with the majority on the, on the choice of this mural. Thank you. And you did a fabulous job, really. You were very, your, your passion for this work came through during that whole process of walking around, and I appreciate how you were so neutral in the process and so informative, too, for us.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rabadi?
On the, on the Shiloh, on, could we go back to the, the slide with the, the two Shiloh murals? So I had a chance to walk the property with Councilmember Johnson and Councilmembers Scroggins Johnson, which I really appreciated both of their time to do that with me. And one thing that I, I originally voted for the Eric Davis mural, and I still love the Eric Davis mural and think we should really find a place to put that. The only thing is that I did see that there are, these pictures actually are already on site, on two of the, on two of the stand-up kiosks. And when we looked at the space, and it's kind of a combination of the fact that the space doesn't face the, the playground directly. And, and so a bunch of things went into the decision, but long and short of it is, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and switch my vote to the Ramon Bardwaj mural. And I, I love the, the addition that you had. I don't know if you worked with him or just had the person do it, but I love the new, the racially ambiguous figure, and that was really my big sticking point. So yeah, so I'm on board now.
Great. Did you have any thoughts about the MAFC choice?
I, to be honest, I mean, I don't know what to tell you. I still like the one on the left better, but if we're, you know, if we're going with the one, if we're going with the one on the right, you know, I'm, I guess that one, I guess I'm not really as passionately fond of either one of those enough to make a big deal out of it, to be honest with you.
Okay. Fair enough.
Excuse me. I, I have, I want to go back to the Shiloh. I just, I, I'm, I still believe that, I'll, I'll go ahead and change my vote, because it looks like that's where we're headed anyway. But I am concerned that, I really like the Eric Davis one, because I think it better tells the story of Shiloh. I just have a hard time looking at the one above, understanding what it, what it tells us about Shiloh. I mean, I think it's the last remaining part of our Black history, and I just wish there was a way, maybe not here, but I, I hope there's a way we could put it like, remember Rabadi said, like in another place of the town. Because I just really like anywhere we can, you know, I love these mile markers when you're running in Shiloh and you can learn about these historic figures like Reverend Dunson, Ed Cole, Luther Green, Jesse Harris. And, you know, I just sometimes feel like, just around Morristown, the more and more residents we come in here from around the region, they don't really have an appreciation or understanding about history. And, you know, years ago, we would do lectures and we would talk about Darwin, Ernest Doherty, the historian would do that, and we haven't even been doing that recently. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I don't think it's going to swing anyone's mind, but I've been thinking about this before the meeting tonight. So, you know, just wanted to, you know, just express that.
Thank you. Did you have thoughts about the MAFC choice? Anyone else want to weigh in on the MAFC? So it sounds like we're, I'm hearing Sampada is our choice for that?
Great. And to, we'll move on to Shiloh now, and just to speak to that point, just to reiterate, I will actually go to an additional slide so you can see a little more of that. So for this selection, you'll see on the far left side, the artist has depicted planting and gardening and a harkening back to history. And from there, the story is told of the, of celebration of culture and how everything kind of stems from history. And so there is a note of history within this design. I just wanted to make that a little clear.
I'm pleased with the Ramon one for this space. And the front of the building is problematic because of the doors and stuff, so this doesn't work there. Is my understanding correct?
Correct. So the design, you'll see here that it carries from this facade around the side, the rear here, and along the other, the opposite side.
I was just asking, because the front of the fire station also has doors and stuff, and we're creating it there. So you just felt it wouldn't work on this one? Because facing the playground is really the, the brightness and the fun.
Yeah, I think that with Fire Admin in specific, we wanted to make sure that it was as viewable as possible. And really, on that building, there isn't really an unobstructed facade. And so it was more so, let's make sure we have those views. For Shiloh, the train comes by the rear. You have all of these other places where it can be viewed. So those were the considerations that were made.
I would just say, did the artist consider putting anything on the front?
For Shiloh?
For Shiloh, yeah.
That wasn't something that we contemplated with the RFP. So the selections were made for location, were submitted by staff. And so within the RFP, these were the areas that were identified.
Well, I'll hold out hope that sometime in the future, we might actually extend the mural to the front, too, if it's really well received. I think I saw, I thought, I saw Rabadi first, but then all these others are up, too. So we'll start with Councilmember Rabadi first.
Yeah, go ahead. Take somebody else. Liz hasn't spoken yet.
Councilmember Fender, we haven't heard from you yet. Please.
So regarding this mural, I'm with Councilmember Rao on this. You know, I, I think the, so I live near this area, and I walk the Shiloh Greenway a lot, and I've seen the kiosk. I've stopped and read them myself. And when my son was younger, I've stopped and read them with him, because I thought it was important. However, I will say that most people are not going to stop and read those, and it has to be a conscious decision for people to stop and read them. So I think it, that the mural, Eric Davis's mural, puts Shiloh's history front and center. Yes, I hear the concern that this side that the mural's on faces away from the playground and toward the railroad track. However, it is there, and I would not want to lose this opportunity to recognize the history that we do have in the Shiloh community. As we all know, in this town, land is getting bought up, right and left, bulldozed. I mean, even right across the street here, there's property that, where the land, the trees are getting cut down, and I think another church is being built there. And then right on the other side of the park, and that cemetery, and a house, an Indian temple is being built. So, you know, there, the history of the Shiloh community is getting built over. So I think we need to do what we can to preserve, because what they did in that area is really something that is commendable. The, the Reverend, I mean Rao remembered his name, and I'm ashamed that I don't remember it. I mean, he, he emphasized to the other freed Black Americans there, the importance of, of owning land. And, and that's how they were able to remain free and have income. And I was going to say something else there, and now I've lost my train of thought. But, um, so I think it's important that, you know, and I think the other mural is beautiful, and I love what the artist did to change that figure. If we don't put this mural celebrating the Black history and the Shiloh community there, I would like for us to do something somewhere else. But I think this is a great opportunity to highlight the Shiloh community in the middle of the Shiloh community here. Thank you.
Thank you. Go with Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Johnson, please.
I just wanted to say that I, I 100% agree about highlighting the Shiloh community, but I, I guess what, I guess what I'm saying is that we, I think we could be doing a better job, frankly, of highlighting the, the contribution of the Shiloh community everywhere. I don't think that it necessarily has to be just in that, you know, in that area of, of Morrisville. I mean, I would love to see us put something like this, like, I'd love to slap this on a wall in town center, you know, really make a splash with it. Yeah, I, you know, I mean, I don't, I definitely don't disagree with anything the Councilmember Fender said. And we did talk about, as we were walking out there, we did talk about some ideas for adding the, not maybe these specific images, but Councilmember Johnson was saying, you know, we have banners with big images, maybe we could add them in the picnic structure, you know, stuff like that, that we could, I mean, I just think that generally speaking, we could do a better job of promoting the history of Shiloh. And, you know, I don't think, you know, I, I'm not sure that this is actually that great of an opportunity. I don't think it's, I mean, I'm glad we're getting a mural there. I'm glad we're getting a mural anywhere. I don't think this, this specific mural in this location is going to be viewed by that many, like, a really large sample of Morrisville people. I would love to see us take this idea and put it somewhere where it's really going to, where it's really going to be viewed.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson, followed by Mayor Pretem Garamella.
So I'm going to agree with Councilmember Robati's comments. You know, when we talked about both of these murals, I said I loved what Eric Davis had done, but I did not think it, it was appropriate on this particular building. And when we were out there, I looked again at the building on the front side, and I understand, and now we know Brittany has such an artistic background, I understand why the front was not picked. There are, if I'm calling correctly, there are three doors, and then there's a pull-down, kind of a window, because there's like a concession stand on the one end of the building. There, there's so much on that side of the building that it would break up any kind of artistic feature. So I, I understand why the backside of the building was chosen. And I just, for me, I have a hard time putting Eric Davis's work on the backside of a building. That does not sit well with me. I think, as I said the last time, I think there's a, there could be a better opportunity to highlight this kind of work, and to highlight the, the rich history of, of the Shiloh community, and not do it on the backside of a bathroom facility. I just, I have a really hard time with that. And Mayor Pretem Garamella mentioned, or suggested, maybe we do something at the shelter. I think that potentially could be something. I looked at the Luther Green building itself, which is a more prominent building and closer to the road, but even that had, there were lots of windows and doors, and it, they just didn't seem to be anything there either. So I think, I think we all agree that this is important history to capture and remember, and to highlight appropriately, and I would like us not to forget that in the work that we're doing, and find some other opportunity moving forward. And I, I'm fine with the, the mural on the top, and I appreciate the artist making the changes that Councilmember Robati wanted. And I just appreciate that, because that's, I, I don't, I'm not an artist, but I can imagine an artist invests a lot in, in the work that they do, and to have, you know, seven people who are not really artists, I don't think anybody's an artist up here, critique their work and then ask them to change it. I, I thank them very much for that. That's, that's a lot. So, thank you.
That's a good point. I am not an artist. Mayor Pretem Garamella, followed by Councilmember Grogan Johnson.
Again, I, I agree with everything which has been said. And we have opportunities to have this. The two things that come to my mind is the new South Lot extension, what is getting built, and there is a restroom and a shelter area that is open, that, you know, you can have that, or the other side of Northwest Park, too, which is also a place where it can, these things can come. And no one is discounting the history and the contribution of the Shiloh community, but also it would be good, not just in that area, to focus other places, too, you know, so that it carries around. And I was thinking, the cost of this painting is like $9,000. If we can work with the artist, if he can use his creative juices to paint around, the RFP doesn't talk for it, it might be a couple of extra grand that he may charge, I don't know. But if he can do the front pieces, you know, too, that, that would just be a wrapper that goes all around, and it might just look good, instead of just on the three sides. That's again, up to him, $2,000, $3,000 is not, you know, in the scale of what we are doing, should not be a big deal. But I think that completes it. We don't have to come back again and again for this area, is my thought process.
Councilmember Grogan Johnson, followed by Councilmember Robati.
Thank you. I really feel that the Shiloh community needs to be recognized, and I did take the walk with Councilmember Johnson and Councilmember Robati, and it really struck me, this building is a restroom slash concession, and I don't want to be putting images of people of historic nature on the backside of a restroom. So we can do better. We can find the right opportunity to honor those members of the community. And I really kind of like what Mayor Pretem said about maybe the Church Street Park expansion. There's not even a building there yet, but we know we have to have a restroom there, and there's, well, there's, no, there's other structures and multi, I mean, we might be able to think and imagine something there. So let's look for opportunities to share that history and honor that. The first choice that we have, I look at it in a different lens. I see movement and people engaging, and it seems like, from the, the left to the right, where you were showing the farm, you know, kind of, and then the creative, it, it speaks to me that it, it's flowing through history and not just flowing through a community. I mean, it's both. It's, it's a redundant kind of imagery, but it kind of honors the past and honors our community today as well. And I really, and it's colorful and vibrant and lively, and that really makes me smile and be proud of the town and what we're doing there. And we can incorporate other elements in other ways, but around the front might be a difficult challenge for the artist, but definitely this image is, is solid and happy. So I really want to see this in this location. So thank you.
Councilmember Robati, please.
Yeah, just really quick. If, for some reason, it's like we can't legally expand the RFP, or the artist doesn't want to do it, I just wondered, is there some way that we could at least paint the front of this building, so that it would, you know, with one of the colors that's in the mural? Just because it's such a shame, because the mural is going to be so bright and beautiful, and the, the facing side of that building, that is what people are actually going to see, is like this, this really dull color that, like, you know, I, I, so I just wondered, I think it'd be better if the artist could, you know, think of something beautiful to go there, but if not, could, could we do it? Like, could we just pick up one of the colors, or paint it in stripes, or some kind of thing like that? You know, I'm not an artist, anyway.
Well, you are an artist, but I, I would just piggyback on that, like, making it a nice color and just having one or two of the figures interspersed, so it's not like a, a one piece, but there's the images there that you sort of have a hint of what's going on the rest of the building. So that's something, it sounds like the council would support the artist thinking about that.
That's a conversation that we can have with the artist. I know that if this particular design is selected, it is telling a story from beginning to end, and I think that there are ways that they could incorporate the colors and some of the imagery to bring that around the front side, if that's something that council would be interested in.
Seeing some head nods on that summary. But to confirm, it looks like we're going with the Ramon design for this structure. And we'd really appreciate if staff could, over time, this mural program is starting to find other places to use things like the Eric Davis murals, other places in town. Does that summarize what we're thinking as a group? Okay. Wonderful, thank you. The easy one now.
Exactly. So save the easier one for last. So again, you have three options here, the original design, you have design with the extension, and then, and with, and Morrisville added, and then you have the original size with Morrisville added.
I could start, I requested that we investigate whether or not we can add it to the third, because when I looked at it, even when you're just driving by, it looked like the two pieces instead of the three, it would look kind of unfinished, and I felt like after three, there is more of a break. I would still also be interested to know if the artist would be able to paint the frames and maybe add some stickers to make this a little bit more, so there aren't three or four holes in the picture, like the screens that you see on cars that actually show in one direction, but you can see through. I'd be interested in knowing something like that, but, and I really like the addition of Morrisville, whoever came up with that at our last meeting, I think that really adds a lot, because even when you're driving by pretty quickly, I think that'll really resonate with people. Who else would like to comment on this, these three options that we have before us? Councilmember Johnson, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
So I like option A, Brittany. Of course, I love the word Morrisville. I had asked about that, too. I don't know if I was the first one, but this, this artist had put the word Morrisville on his other work, and I wanted to make sure it was on this one, too. So I like option A, where it extends on that whole kind of side. I don't, I'm not as interested in putting decals on the windows. I don't, I, I'm not. I, I'm happy with the design that the artist has, and would put that on the side of the building.
I will speak to that for one moment. I, I think that it could distract from the artwork itself, if any sort of decal were added to the windows. And I did want to mention that even if the, the shuttles, shutters have been removed, so with that removed, it really does kind of diminish the, the appearance of the windows, and it kind of takes away that intrusion. So I encourage you all to see that, they have already been removed, and I think that will contribute to continuity of the design, for sure.
Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Grogan Johnson, please.
I like option A as well, and that it extends the whole length of that side. I don't think it's necessary to put stickers on the, the windows. I think option A, as it is, is, is fine.
Councilmember Grogan Johnson, please.
So I would like option A as well, but I was mindful that this is an expansion of the surface area, so there probably should be an adjustment in the fee or the cost to accommodate that extra section. But I am not a fan of the screens. I think that would be more distracting than, than the windows are today. So it's a, it's a nice improvement for option A. Thank you.
Anyone from this side like to chime in? Councilmember Garamella, option A. Or Councilmember Rao.
Yeah, A.
One. So this is the easy one, but it's...
What?
Is it, is it possible to brick in the windows and actually have the mural be the whole thing, or are those windows necessary for safety or light inside the building?
Don't people work in there?
They do, that's why, that's why I'm asking. That's why the screens would be a mix of both, but was that considered, I guess is the question?
Early on, it was considered. A portion of the windows, I'm not sure if each window actually has views to the inside. However, when you look at the UDO and you have penetration requirements and things of that nature, we did evaluate that, and looking at, you know, trying to make sure that we fulfill our own requirements there. And I, I do feel that the design can be seen and met its full potential, even with those, those windows, so I will say that.
Sounds great. Can always count on our staff to explore all the options, so I appreciate that very much. Okay, so do you have what you need for all three?
I think so. I do want to go back to Shiloh for a moment. As council would like the design extended to the front facade... As council would like the design extended to the front facade, are we comfortable with that being evaluated with staff? And the town manager having that approval over the contract?
Some head nods down here.
I'm fine with the front being painted and updated. Because it, I agree with Councilmember Robati's comments about it's, it's a little dull on the other side. And it would be sad to leave it that way and not have it at least painted.
I think it, I agree with Councilmember Johnson. And if there was a way to incorporate elements like the sun and a flower or the bird or whatever fit, I think staff can make that call.
That's a great follow-up, Ms. Johnson, to confirm that. I think that's helpful and doesn't have to come back to us that way. So thank you for that. Okay.
I will go on to our motion language if you all are ready for that. And let me know if you have any other questions.
I guess, need some help with the artist names?
So I, I wrote them down. I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to select Sampada Agawal for the Morrisville Aquatics and Fitness Center mural location. And Ramon Bardwa. I apologize, for the Shiloh Park restroom mural location. And Max Doddle, Dwaddle, Doddle, Doddle. Option A for the Fire Administration mural location. Additionally, authorizing all contract agreement authorization approvals to be completed by the town manager.
I have a motion by Councilmember Johnson, a second by Mayor Potem Garamella. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Great job. You herded all the cats and got us to a great solution. And we're very excited. The mural program is pretty officially really going now.
It is. Thanks to you all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And actually, we are at the time when we had the originally scheduled break. So would we like to do that or?
Let's, no, can we get, this one will be fast. These people have been waiting.
Yep. I'm afraid we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and take a 15-minute break. So we'll reconvene at 7:59, please. Town Manager Zudma, are you ready? Excellent. Good. Okay, I'm going to bring us back into session. At this time, I'd like to pass it to Deputy Town Manager Rodriguez to take us through the next item.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Good evening again. I am before you tonight seeking approval of a resolution adopting the Language Access Plan. On February the 13th, I provided an overview of the scope of the plan. And the actions that are included are a roadmap to increase language access in the community. The resolution that you have before you accomplishes two things. Number one is the adoption of the Language Access Plan. And number two, it establishes a language access policy to be in compliance with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the Executive Order 13166. At the time when I provided the overview on February the 13th, there were no questions or changes requested. So before we proceed with taking action on this item, I would like to acknowledge some key individuals that are in the room with us that have played a key role in this process. And as I shared with you last time, this effort couldn't have been possible without our community partner, Hindi Vikasmandal. And we have with us Sushma Maheshwari and Arun Dati Baba. And they are with Hindi Vikasmandal, and they have been involved every step of the way. And without their insight and perspective, this plan wouldn't be as good as it is. We also have Susan Clifford, who is the Program Manager from the Language Access Collaborative. And she has been leading all nine teams through this effort. And her guidance has really, really made a difference through the entire process. You can tell how passionate she is about this work and how she pours her soul into all of this work for Language Access. So we are very grateful, Susan, for all of your effort and the rest of the team. Because I know it's a huge team from the Language Access Collaborative as well. The support has been impressive. So please extend our gratefulness to the rest of the team. We have been really honored to be part of this program and we are very grateful. So we look forward to the continued work in this effort. As you may have seen in our social media, we produced a video to announce the efforts of the Language Access Plan. If you have not had the chance to watch the video, I am about to play it for you so that you could see the video. But it will also, we would like to share with the public as well. This video will also be included in our website so that we can continue to let people know what the Language Access Plan is about. So before you take action, I would like to present this video to you all. So if we can, go ahead.
My name is Kat Hall. My mother language is English. Namaste. Mera naam Sushma hai aur meri matra bhaasa Hindi hai. Niha, wo shi Hope, Zhang Shijia. Wadamui shi Zhongwen. Shangdi zhufu ni.
Hola, mi nombre es Giselle y mi lengua materna es español. The town of Morrisville is a friendly, inclusive, and diverse community. Our leadership is constantly working to create ways for our community to live connected and live well. A big part of living connected is embracing our cultural diversity. And Language Access is an essential step in this journey. Based on data collected and the frequency of encounters experienced by our town departments, the community languages for Morrisville include Hindi, Chinese, Spanish, and Vietnamese. The town understands the vital responsibility of effective communications with all residents to ensure thoughtful consideration within our policy development that guides our good work for the entire community. From January 2023 through January 2024, the town took part in the Local Government Language Access Collaborative, which is a one-year interactive course that is designed to build capacity for North Carolina local governments to communicate with residents in community languages. A byproduct of the collaborative was the creation of the Language Access Plan that will guide our efforts to better communicate with the entire community. Morrisville was joining this effort by Hindi Vikasmandal, a community organization who is a part of the Hindu Society of North Carolina. Bhaasa pahunch yojana se Hindi Vikasmandal aur town of Morrisville ke beech bahut hi achcha samband raha hai. Aur saath me kama team ki tarah kam karne ka anubhav bahut adhut raha. Bilkul hi kaha bhaasa pahunch yojana ka sakaratmak parinam hone wala hai hamare samaj pe. Aur iska bahut hi laab dayak aur samaj ke liye achcha parinam hone wala hai. To dhanewad namaste. The Language Access Plan is a commitment to effectively communicate with our entire community and to provide a solid foundation for a uniform and town-wide policy to provide meaningful access to serve persons who speak languages other than English. The goal of the Language Access Plan include increasing the understanding and awareness of other cultures and language access inclusivity, the development of a brand to allow residents to identify with the Language Access Plan, the creation of accessible programs and information resources that embrace a diverse, inclusive community, improving resources that aid critical emergency situation, and the development of key resources and professional developments of staff that improve language access to information and services. Language access is very important to us. We are working to build language bridges for strong community connections. For more information about our Language Access Plan, please visit our website, www.morrisvillnc.gov. Thank you. I'd be glad to take any questions you may have.
Yes, thank you. I was actually going to ask if we could do that because it will be beneficial for the effort, to document the effort. And thank you for the action this evening. Now is when the real work begins.
Okay, that was very nice. At this time, we're at number 12, future meetings, events, and community engagement opportunities. As always, for a full listing of events, please see the town calendar at www.morrisvillnc.gov. Have just a few things to mention. We will be back here on Thursday night at 6:00 PM for a scheduled work session and on March 12th for our first March council meeting. The Spring White Goods Collection Day is Thursday, March 7th. Items to be collected include washing machines, dryers, freezers, refrigerators, dishwashers, water heaters, stoves, ovens, and dehumidifiers. Registration is required and closes at 5:00 PM on Monday, March 4th. Our Morrisville Holy Celebration of Colors will be Saturday, March 16th from 12:00 to 3:00 PM at Cedar Fort Community Center. The town celebration is free for all community members and will have holy powders. There will be artists and vendors and food for purchase. On Saturday, March 16th also marks the start of Regional Creek Week. There are numerous activities available to promote sustainability, concluding with our Spring Green Day on Saturday, March 23rd from 8:00 AM until noon at Church Street Park. We will be offering drive-through stations for recycling items that cannot be placed in residential recycling bins for safely disposing of hazardous, hazardous items and for donating needing, needed items to the community groups. This event is sponsored by the Morrisville Environment and Stormwater Committee, the Sustainability Program, and the Public Works Department to provide the Morrisville community a one-stop destination for recycling and proper handling of hazardous materials. Now we're at item 13, council and manager comments. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Shagunis Johnson followed by Mayor Potem Garamella.
I have no comments this evening. Thank you.
Mayor Potem Garamella followed by Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Johnson followed by me.
Okay, let's keep this on a roll, y'all. I have no comments tonight.
Okay, I'd like to keep that rolling, so I will. Councilmember Robati followed by Councilmember Fender. Thank you. Councilmember Fender followed by Councilmember Rao, please.
I have no comments, mayor.
Councilmember Rao, please.
I'm gonna reduce my six comments to two comments. When the staff has a chance, if we can get an update next meeting on the Gandhi statue and where we are with that. And I just, I've met some Ukrainians in Morrisville in the triangle. There's 25,000 of them. Just want to tell you all that we're praying for you as your country is two years into the war. And the final thing is I just want to congratulate our IT team for being nominated again for the Government Insights IDC Award for our smart building for MAFC. I think it's just great. We continue to do great things in that area. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Just to piggyback on that, it's possible to actually vote for our submission in that space. So I'd encourage residents to go ahead and check our social media. And you get one vote per person. And if most of Morrisville votes, we will win this really coveted prize, which will help us continue to be a leader in this space.
Thank you for reminding.
Thank you. Town Manager Zudma.
No particular comments other than to share in the concept of responsiveness. We'll give you an update in about three minutes.
Thank you.
At this time, we have one work session. And it's a town council roundtable, which will be facilitated by Deputy Town Manager Giselle Rodriguez. So if we could just move down to the tables with our microphones and any materials you might need, that would be great. Thank you very much. No break, just straight to the table, please.
Would like to eat or no? Do we eat or no?
Of course.
I don't know, in case I need it.
The third closed session is what? Personnel, A6, including client, was A3? So it's only A3 and A6?
Need to be seated in any particular order. One side of the table.
It's one of us who is smart enough to bring this. So when you facilitate, I'm sorry that I didn't ask everyone to bring them, but I'm sure you'll do fine. Deputy Town Manager, the floor is yours.
So the roundtable discussion this evening will have three parts. That makes it sound long, but hopefully we can move through it, right? So the first part will be, we'll be discussing the new items submitted. We had only one submission by Mayor Colley. Then we will move into the summary of updates of the items that have been previously presented. And the last part is that you had expressed interest in discussing the future of roundtable discussions. And how do you really want this conversation to be? And what would you like it to be moving forward? So, so let's move then into the first part. Mayor Colley, if you would like to share your item, your submission?
Sure.
So we, we transitioned to the Microsoft Forms option this time to make it easier to be filled out. And we did receive one submission. So if you would like to go ahead?
Sure. So at the retreat, we were talking about brainstorming, and the idea came up of, we have a parking lot at the retreat, and it seems like it would be good to have a parking lot just ongoing for ideas that we just want to be able to share with each other and look at. And then potentially, those could become roundtables if people talk about them amongst themselves. So it's pretty simple. I believe because of public record law, it would have to be a public thing. So anything that went up there could never come down, kind of like social media. But we would be the only people to have access to it and make comments on it and things like that. So it's just a way to make it easier for us to socialize ideas without having to make six phone calls or talk things back and forth. So I think it's worth trying. Innovation is one of our main values, and this would be a way to share ideas about innovating. I hope that you all will consider supporting it, at least trying it. Councilmember Fender, I'll let you facilitate.
So where would it be?
I'd imagine online.
On the website, town's website, or social media, where?
I guess I'd ask the attorney, what would be, probably, we're staff. What would be the meaningful way to do that?
Yeah, my question for the attorney is, if you're gonna interact on it, does that take you to a different approach than just posting ideas that you can see? I think it's similar, but it's not the same.
Thank you. Sorry, if you start interacting through that, that makes it a little bit different. Just want to get the attorney to offer feedback on that.
Yeah, obviously, if you start going back and forth in any kind of meaningful ways, like you're deliberating, and so that would not be appropriate. If you want to have, you can post it pretty much anywhere you want to, anywhere that's accessible to each of you, if you decide to go forward with it. I guess it's like a bulletin board type of idea. I'm a little unclear, you know, what would happen after somebody posted an idea, how you'd move it from there to tonight and make it a work session, roundtable item. I'm not saying you can't do it, I'm just, I can't quite envision how that would work.
One comment that Councilmember Skrogge Johnson mentioned, that there's some kind of tools that, like, you essentially throw a post-it note up virtually or something like that. Or you mentioned that. So I'd imagine that would be the possibility, but if there's a concern about, that would be deliberating, I'm not sure.
I could see it working either way, where if one of us had an idea and wanted to put it up there and just, you know, I don't know if, I mean, I guess when we first talked about this at retreat, I was thinking of something like a Miro board, which is, it's an application where you, like, someone would post an idea, and it's sort of like a whiteboard, right? You post an idea there, just like writing it down, and then everybody else comes along and they add ideas. So you can't, like, you can't take anything off. It's more like a yes-and kind of situation where, you know, or like, think about this. I guess I'm unclear, Frank, is it that we could not do that, or we could not do that unless it was publicly available? Or what's the exact position?
I mean, I don't have any problem with you doing just exactly what you said. I guess you envision it to be internal, so it would just be something each of you would comment on. But then to, at some point, you've got to move it somewhere and do something with it, you know? As long as that's open and public, I don't see there's any problem with it.
I was gonna say that I could even see it as like a, as something where it's not interactive, where you, where you just put an idea up there and then text everybody to say, hey, I put an idea up there, I'm thinking of introducing it at a roundtable, you know, text me your thoughts. And we don't reply at all, and we just, you know, we just give the person their thoughts, the idea gets better, and then when it's ready, we take it to a roundtable. Or there's no support for the idea, and you just, you know, think of another idea. I mean, I'm all for collaboration tools, no matter, no matter what, you know? I think anything that helps us to put ideas out there is a good thing, in my opinion.
So should I use this, or use this? I'll use both.
Yes.
So I was exactly thinking of a Miro board. The thing with a Miro board and public records law is that it's probably not a good idea. Usually, Miro boards are done in the framework of a workshop, where there is a defined output and defined use for what that output would be, you know, what the product would be used for. I'm not really sure what you had intended for this bulletin board concept. Who is the audience? Might be us, might be the public, you know, definitely would be publicly available. How frequently should we look there? What is that about? Is it about deliberation? Is it about new ideas? You know, there's a lot of unknowns, you know, for this kind of thing. So I think using a Miro board in a workshop setting would be a great thing for the town council, because we could build upon each other, and that would help facilitate both, you know, audible as well as written kind of communication more efficiently. But this has a lot of risks, in my opinion, because it's really not defined. We're not defining the audience, we're not defining the frequency, it's not really clear how you can access it if the public wants to see it. We have other channels that we can have, you know, you know, discussions. We can submit a, what we exactly did. TJ, you proposed this idea using a form. We could do a lot of these forms and then review the forms. So we don't need a bulletin board, but we could use these forms and have a catalog of forms with new ideas, with more specific goals and so forth like that. See, I would rather have something that's a little more formed and has a clear direction as to where it's going, because this is a roundtable, and it's clear that this is the venue, and the output is yes or no. And, but just to have a Miro board without no defined purpose is risky. That's what I feel.
So I'm gonna, I agree with Councilmember Skrogge Johnson. And so it occurred to me, if this is a tool we want to use at a roundtable, I think that has some merit. But I think if the goal is to get to a roundtable item, I'm not sure this is the way to do it. I do like the idea of using it, and maybe after we use it. And so, so here's where I just thought about. When roundtable, we come with a preconceived, specific kind of idea, or a specific project, or end game, or solution, or whatever. Why don't we use a roundtable and this tool then to brainstorm on a topic versus, you know, coming with the solution? I mean, I think, I think sometimes we go to a solution without understanding what it is that we really, really trying to, the problem that we're trying to solve. So I would, maybe when we get to part three, I'll come back to that.
I like the idea, I think, I like this idea of, so what you're saying is just having a, like, a visual of seeing what our issues are that we want to brainstorm, like. And I like the idea of having like a dashboard of the topics that we're addressing, but I think it's, I would like that tool maybe in the roundtable, because I think that's what's missing. So I appreciate you bringing this up, because I think sometimes the roundtable's gotten so long, it's really hard to take a step back and say, what are my colleagues thinking of across the town? So this kind of a thing could really provide that, like a reminder, like a dashboard, saying, these are the issues when we finish the retreat, go in the year, and then we can kind of see how we're making progress. Because there's so many roundtable items now, I just have lost count how many we've had, right? And they're all interspersed. So what are the roundtable items on economic development? What are the roundtable items on public safety? What are the roundtable items? So kind of like, a tool like that, that we would maybe condense the work sessions.
So what you're talking about is kind of what the roundtable used to be, and we used to have more discussions, and then we converted and said, this isn't really working that well, let's go ahead and do a quick, two or three minutes, and just up or down. So we might be thinking about recircling. I just see that there's, I'm sure that all seven of us have lots of great ideas, and the roundtable happens maybe quarterly, probably a little bit more than that. But it doesn't happen with a frequency that, when an idea comes, the time might be sooner rather than later, and having to wait, and then we're given one week's notice, and we're doing a roundtable, or we know it from the rolling calendar. So I'm just trying to create an opportunity for us to sort of get more ideas up on the wall, because I think that's important for us to add value to what we're doing as a town. We have a strategic plan, we have a staff that's doing lots of things. So I fully recognize the fact that adding one more thing to their plate is difficult, but that shouldn't be the reason why new ideas don't flourish within Morrisville.
I didn't hear anybody say that. I didn't hear anybody say-
I'm saying it, because I believe it.
Well, then maybe we need to start there. Maybe you believe that. I'm not sure the rest of us are saying that.
I do believe that we, in just my opinion, I think when we talk about innovation, I think the roundtable initially was just like something that we would come in and share an idea and quickly move in, and now it's become a much more formal process where, and I appreciate the work the staff does on it, but we have to submit something by five o'clock, by deadline, and then you forget, oh, I have a new idea. I think if we could incorporate something like this, where the roundtable becomes either a more frequent thing, or we're more frequently sharing ideas. So we don't feel like we're blocked into such a structured thing, because it kind of takes away the thing for us to be, it's the one part of the council meeting where we're not up there, we're here together. We should try to engage. I mean, Charlotte City, kind of, they're a much bigger city. They do more of that, kind of an informal, kind of get-together at the table before they go into a meeting, when they sit down at a table and talk about, these are the things. So that's what I mean, I think we need to get back to that.
And I think we recognize that the roundtable's not working, and that's why we have a part three tonight, because it hasn't been working for all of us. So I wish we would have this board tonight. That might help.
Yeah, exactly.
That might help this discussion.
Sounds like we're getting into part two or three of what you wanted to talk about.
So we can table this and maybe circle back or something there.
Wait, I mean, one thing regarding your idea for an ideal, ideal wall was, for you, if there was a way that you could mock up what you are envisioning, so that we had an idea of what your idea wall is, maybe it would be-
One example.
Yeah, maybe it would be easier to understand what you're thinking about.
Fair point.
I meant to say, a lot of people can have a lot of ideas over a period of time, you know? If there's a form that needs to be submitted, and the email goes to the council, whoever submits it, or the staff, you know, like, then at least that's a record, that this person has this idea, has been submitted. Doesn't necessarily mean it will be picked up. It's an idea that has been submitted. And roundtable, they'll have that opportunity. They want to take two of the 10 that they have submitted, is up to their priority, or someone else who thinks, okay, you already have two, then someone else will pick it up, or something like that. But a problem, idea is, it's the point of record, you know? In, it is there, no deliberations, because deliberations, again, gets into a messy situations. And then, forms are not built for that, it's public record again. So, you know, Steve could have an idea, middle of the night, fill it up, push it in, you know? And every quarter or whenever we have it, we have it. And that does, that does not necessarily mean it will be picked up till that person says, I want to pick these two.
So it, you can, okay. So I think, sorry, I don't want to talk over you. So it sounds like it could be almost a precursor to the roundtable, and it could also help determine perhaps when you need a roundtable, because, you know, you have one, and that's, that's fine, I'm just, as an example, you have one item tonight. You know, theoretically, by the way it's set up right now, you could have 14 items in a night if everybody chose to submit two. So you could also look at it as, pop your idea up, or perhaps fill up, fill out your form, so it goes in, and that gets distributed, so everybody knows it's there. And then, you know, you can perhaps even go back and thumb up, thumb down, or nothing. And then when there's, you know, enough thumbs up on enough items, we could schedule a roundtable for you as a thought. But that's, you know, that's getting up to you. I agree there. There are a million great ideas out there, and that, I think, leads into part three, which I think we're kind of talking about now, so we'll just keep going, is figuring out what, what is really important to you as a group, as a body, and weighing that against what is the workload involved with that potentially. And then I'm also concerned a little bit with making sure that when they're asked to have budgetary impact, that we're doing that as a part of the budget process, as opposed to what could be, could be seen as sidestepping the budget process to try to do things, you know, sort of out of cycle. Now, again, you can choose to do that, but that's, I think, something you want to think about as you realign yourselves with what the roundtable's going to be going forward. And of course, we'll support whatever direction you want to give us.
When Vicki said that, I think it was Vicki, said that the Miro board is best used in a topic framework, and I think that's very true. And I was just thinking that maybe it would be easier if there was, I mean, there's 12 months in a year, if, if there was a roundtable every month, and we knew what was coming up, and we knew the subject, and we could, you know, today it's, next month it's affordable housing, the month after that it's, I don't know, CapEx, you know, the month after that it's safety. And, you know, if we know what's coming up, and we bring a group of ideas, everybody comes with their top two, whatever those are, and then that might, that might make it easier to kind of see progress, because I, I don't think the, necessarily, the roundtable is broken at the point in which we don't have enough ideas. I feel like the problem is really that we have ideas, and they, they just like, they come to the roundtable, and they just fall off a cliff. And I never, like, I never, I can't recall the last time we had an idea at a roundtable that I, that I got like any resolution on or know what happened to it. So, you know, that to me, if, like, I don't think there's any point having roundtables if we don't have staff capacity to execute. Like, if they're, if they're maxed out, I think there's no, you know, I don't know why we're having a roundtable. And another thing is, it might also be helpful to know where there is staff capacity. Parks and Rec has capacity. Good, let's do a Parks and Rec roundtable, you know? Like, like, maybe approach it from the other direction where, you know, where we could, like, maybe there's no point in giving an idea that has to do with public works, but, you know, but stormwater has tons of capacity, you know? And we could, I mean, that might also help focus the discussions.
So I had a couple things. So building off of something Councilmember Robati said, I don't want, I think you were suggesting, like, one month, we only bring ideas that have to do with affordable housing, and another month, we only bring ideas that-
Well, maybe not that we only bring them, but we only discuss them. Like, we pick up the items in the hopper that are public safety related, and we talk about those, was my thought.
Well, I guess I would, I wouldn't want to be confined or constrained to that, because when you have an idea, you have an idea. And I think the, I, I don't see that the roundtable process is broken. I think, I think it's a, an important tool. It's the only way that us as council members have to get certain topics to be talked about. Otherwise, we, we don't have control over the agenda. And just, as a couple examples, for me, like, a few- And just as a couple examples, for me, like a few months ago, I brought up as a roundtable item for the town to sponsor a 5K. So I don't know if it's coincidence or not, or if it just worked out, but we're doing a 5K next month. And, and another example is that when I first got on the council, with the first roundtable that we had, I came armed with all my facts and figures about solar panels and what all was being done in the municipalities around us. And then when budget times came, we had a line item in the budget for solar panels. So that was an example that it ended up in the budget cycle. But I think, I think we don't, I think we should still have the flexibility that if there's an item, an idea that comes up and it's $25,000 or $50,000, that we should still have the flexibility to not have to wait nine months or a year to come back around for the next budget cycle before we can do anything. And that's why I see the roundtable as being a valid tool to be able to do that. I mean, I get, we don't want to add additional load on staff. I realize there needs to be a balance. And I, maybe y'all can help us figure out what the best way to do that is. But I don't want to totally get rid of the roundtable process.
No, we're not suggesting that at all.
Okay.
And I would share to, to your point about roundtable items that come forward and whether there's a coincidence or not on actions being taken. All input that is provided by council during a roundtable or even while discussing other topics is, is really taken too hard by staff. So it's incorporated as best way we can. Because we recognize what your interests are and we really want to put your interests at work. So the fact that we have a 5K is not because it's just for coincidence, but because we heard your interest of having a themed 5K. We heard your interest on having solar panels and we have incorporated that into the plan. And so all of the interests and, and ideas and initiatives shared by council, it's, we try to incorporate in the best way we can. So finding a path forward on providing that forum where you could share those interests and ideas in the best and most effective way possible is, we're one of the things we want to talk about tonight, right? So we do want to talk about a summary of the items that have been previously presented before you. Because we have already started talking about how we think roundtables should be or maybe the, what the future should be, let's continue in that conversation. And we circle back at the end as a summary, just providing the summary of the items that have been previously presented because I feel like the conversation's already going. So if it's okay, let's continue down that path and let's just continue that conversation. Councilmember, Mayor Pratim Gurimella.
Yeah. Bianca, can you show any agenda item which has the strategic plans, checkboxes? You know what I'm talking about? Like, not these ones, like- Yeah.
If you go to like the language access plan, the third page will-
Click on the first, on the- Click where is this resolution? No, on the other one, right above, right next to 11. Right next to 11B on the title of the item? It won't pull that up?
Isn't it the, isn't it, is it the one thing right under action February 27?
Those are the actual documents, not the-
No.
You know what I'm talking about, the sheet there.
I don't think it carries a hyperlink.
Same example.
Yeah.
It's in the packet if you want to keep-
Yeah, the, the idea where I was coming out with, once while they pull it up is, once an idea is submitted, you keep saying good points whether it has budget implications. What strategic plan does it align to? What is, because the same way you're doing, it is our responsibility or with your help to get the same responsibility checkboxes in there. So that way it aligns with our goal. And also if there is a budget implication, then as Donna was saying, it will go to the next cycle. There's no point until unless the money is there to even talk about it. So at least it gives us that checkboxes that when we are filling, or the staff can basically say, okay, this aligns with this, 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 and keep that as a placeholder.
And to your point, the document that we have created for the submission of roundtable items do provide for those checkboxes.
They do.
Yeah, they do provide. So Bianca, if you can pull that one up, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you're looking for the other one. But-
That's okay.
Yeah, just the one, attachment, attachment one, it will be attachment one. So if you could scroll down, it will show, it will show the strategic plan alignment. And one of the later questions speak about, is there a cost associated with this item? And you, you will include that information if you know in the front and when you're submitting the item. If you're unsure, obviously when staff is directed to evaluate the item, staff then investigate what the cost implication could be.
So, no, I, I get this, like, this is like our input. I was looking for a gold standard that you, after taking that, just checkbox. What are things that needed so that it gives a confirmation, yes, the staff has seen and they have checked mark against what their strategic and whatever thing is. And that way, now, the council member or the mayor has given their input. The staff has looked and checkboxed it and that is sitting there. So that it is what it is, you know. And then at the time, whenever we are, bring it back. Because at the time, I could say there is no staff implication. But you could, you guys can disagree with that, right? So that is a, your place to basically put it. There, I would say there is no money involved. There is money involved. So you will say that. So that way it gives that checks and it is clearly defined. And that was the strategic checkboxes I was looking at, where you have those things. Like you can fill it, not a staff can fill it, not us.
I would think that staff have seen this and they'd be able to react and say, actually, it doesn't really help operational excellence. And actually, it does have more than just staff resource costs. So I think that's part of the process in that they're betting it. And this would be a good forum for them to share about how it would affect the town.
But I don't, I don't think we needed, it needed to come here for, you know, it can just go in the sheet that anyone can look at. It's a waste of time here to vet that process. Yeah, absolutely. Because why would I, you know, if I've seen, like, if you're convinced, if I'm convinced that the action item I have given, it's a lot of cost implication and all those things. I may think from my positively, like, a certain way. But you guys are looking from a different angle. And I feel convinced and I will not even bring up to a topic to be discussed here.
So I have one thing, just, is somebody else waiting?
So I- Well, I was gonna, I was just gonna try to ask to clarify. So you saying submit something, but then have staff evaluated and say yay or nay?
It, it will be, it will be a record as, as part of this attachment in there. Okay, we have evaluated, is, does it align with the strategic? Yes, whatever thing is. Does it need staff? Yes, it has to be, you know. Budgetary implications are there. Resources are needed, those kind of things. So it is, so everyone clearly sees what is it. Because I could say it's not needed, but it's the staff who have to come back and say, yes, it is needed. So when we are coming to this conversation, those things are very clearly-
A little bit more information. Well, that puts a lot of work on to them.
It's, it's a checkboxes, you know, that's what they're doing right now.
But if you want them doing that before we've taken the vote at the roundtable, that the other council members want to-
Are even interested.
No.
The town manager has a comment.
I don't want to interrupt anybody, but I think that the challenge with that is that sometimes there's, it's just not clear in the ask. We're gonna have to follow up to get a lot more information. Now, that tends to happen here. But there are just items that make perfect sense to whoever submitted it. But we might get in and go, like, I'm, I'm not sure what you're talking about, right?
That's probably not a good sign.
There's any number of things that come through that need that clarification. And I do, I do think we want to be careful to not overcomplicate something that maybe isn't broken necessarily.
I'm sure.
I just wanted to share that along. There's been some discussion of sidestepping budget and things like that. And I would just be worried that great ideas that might have some budget implication if they come up on July 2nd, have to wait till the following July 1st. So that would be just something to encourage our fellow council members to consider. Sorry. Being more flexible and agile as the world changes so much more quickly. I know Kerry deliberately has a mid-year budgetary process. We don't have that, that would be cumbersome. But to be willing to use our resources in a timely manner is just something that I, I value a lot. I just wanted to share that.
I agree with that, I do. I, I don't think, I don't, I mean, I, I feel like sidestepping the budget process is kind of a harsh characterization of the fact that a good idea that in the scheme of things, like I know $25,000 or $50,000 is a lot of money. But in the scheme of things, if we have the money and it's a good idea, I don't necessarily, if we all agree, I don't, I don't, I have never frankly understood why that was, why we couldn't just make things happen sometimes. It's a little bit, you know, it can be a little bit frustrating. But also, I think, like, I remember when we first got on council, I, I know that it had gotten unwieldy, right? But I remember that there was, we, we, somebody would bring an idea and there was a certain amount of discussion, like give and take. And I don't think we time boxed it that well. But I do think that was actually very valuable. And we, we kind of got away from that and we said that it's going to be like, you know, presentation, then yes or no, should staff look into it? And, but I think we, I think we lost something that we need in, in that process of trying to streamline. Because I think what we lost was the ability to, you know, to connect with each other on the idea and to, you know, to add on and to talk about what's important to, you know, like, I have this idea and, you know, and Liz has something that is tangential but could be built into that. And, you know, Vicki doesn't like this idea but could totally see it going this way. And, you know, I mean, I think we kind of lost that somewhere along the way. I always thought that was the most valuable part of the roundtable, frankly.
The collaboration.
Yeah, the collaboration.
Any other input?
So I, I just, just to make a couple of comments on the whole budget implication. I agree, we need to be flexible and maybe on minimum amounts of money. That shouldn't be a, you know, because it's out of the budget timeframe, it shouldn't be a no-go. But I think it could get unwieldy. And if we all, like, we just said, we could, we could have had 14 items here tonight. If you have 14 items at every, and I, I know this hasn't happened. So, but I think if you had 14 items at every roundtable that had some major budget implication, well then, you know, it can add up. So I think that, to be aware of that and conscious of that, I think is important. Again, I know that hasn't happened, but I think that is something that should be said.
Are we on two or three now?
We skipped from one, two, three, and then going back to two.
Mine, mine, what was two?
Two is going over the summary of previously presented.
Well, we can all read on that.
Maybe just put that just in an email.
It is attached to your item, so we can-
Your Gandhi statue is in there.
Yes. So do we have any, any more discussion? How much do you want to change this process? We've heard, we do want to continue to hear the ideas, being able to continue to discuss it. I have heard that now we have the process more formalized. Is, we do have some limitations to item. We did say two items per council member and try to limit the conversation to 15 minutes. Just trying to be respectful of the length of the meetings. So let's talk quickly about that. Is, is how do we feel? We have said it's two items per council member, 15 minutes for discussion. How is that going? I think everyone has been doing pretty well to kind of stick to that. But when we talk about the process more formalized, there is a form to be submitted. How do you all feel about that process, that part of the process?
Too structured.
I don't, I don't like it. I don't like it. I don't like it because I feel like, I don't, I don't like it because I just feel like, for me, it's too structured. I feel like, I mean, I'm sorry. I just feel like when I have a new idea, I want to share with my colleagues. And I feel like I have so many deadlines and I get another thing, I have to get it in by five. And then on the weekend, I could be running and I go, oh, I got a great idea. But now I can't submit a roundtable for four more months. And so that's personally why, I mean, to just, I'm sorry if I'm offending anyone, but that's just the way I feel.
You can be because this email form is available anytime.
You could start zoning out right now.
It's not holding you back.
Yeah, but we get, we get an email saying it has to be in by five. If we don't, or whatever it is, we can't.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, but not, when they, when we get the emails, it says you, that's, that's the deadline.
It's available anytime. I know. We're all just line-driven people. But really, you could do one a month, you could do one a week, you know, whenever you have the time. The reason I like the structure, and I understand and appreciate your willingness to have a great idea, because that, that's how we kind of move things along. The structure helps us do some comparison, analysis, and, and helps us have an understanding of the context of the ideas so that we can make informed decisions.
Is there some reason why an idea could only be discussed at a roundtable? Like, could we, if there was an idea and it came in between roundtables or there wasn't another one for three months, could we put 10 minutes on a, in a meeting and, and talk about the idea? Like, is there, is there a compelling reason not to do that? Because this, I mean, I, you know, I don't know, me and Steve might be like the free spirits of the group, but I also find, I, I haven't literally not submitted an idea since we had to have them in by five o'clock at the, the week before the roundtable. Like I, you know, and I have ideas all the time. So, you know, is there, but is there, does it have to be this format? Like down around the table, you know, it's a roundtable night? I mean, could it just be 15 minutes? Or, you know, like we, we've got three ideas from council. Could we put a half hour on the next meeting? Like, I'm, you know, just maybe kind of, maybe, maybe we could loosen up that part a little bit, I don't know.
So let me talk real quick about the, the limitation to have the timeline submitted by five o'clock of, I think I, last time was last Wednesday, last, last Wednesday at five o'clock.
And that would be explained to me.
Yeah. But I think it's beneficial to, to, to share the reason why we put a time limitation. We, that allows enough time that if a council member submits a roundtable item, we are able to compile the submissions, share it with the rest of the council. So you do have the weekend to evaluate the items before you are here for the discussion. Particularly, we try to add these items to the agenda before the agenda is released. So it comes out as a complete package. It includes the item that were submitted and it also includes the summary of the items that have been worked on. So that was the benefit is it was giving the rest of the council the benefit of having the items to evaluate them individually before you are all coming together. As far as adding roundtables to the council meeting, it's a decision of the council. If council feel like they want to include roundtables more frequent, as you can imagine, we have, we do have a lot of businesses that come through, a lot of business item that comes through the council meeting. So the manager and I try to work our magic and try to balance the meetings to keep them to a reasonable length. We try to keep meetings, project meetings no longer than three and a half, four hours to be reasonable of that. If the desire of council is to add it more frequent, then we may need to adjust the agendas a little different to allow for that time to occur.
How often are we doing roundtables now?
This time, there was a longer period. Last time- This time, there was a longer period. Last time, we had roundtable was last August, and now it's February. If council, if the desire of council is to do it every quarter, then we can make it work, where we can adjust the agendas to do them every quarter. I would say we have not had a specific pattern most recently. Seems like we have added them as we are able to accommodate them, depending on the amount of items on a given agenda.
So I, I, I'm, I'm with councilmember Spargan Johnson. I, I think I need some kind of structure around this. And with, I'm gonna sound like I'm talking out both sides of my mouth, with some kind of flexibility built in. I, I, to, to add time at every meeting, so I'll give it, we started this conversation at 8:16. We're, we have one item. Now, I realize we're talking about a lot more than one item that was, that was submitted. But we've been talking for 45 minutes. And I, I, I don't think it would be 10 or 15, we cannot do anything in 10 or 15 minutes. And I don't mean that in negative, it's just the truth, we can't. And we are not, we don't, we don't give such little time to ideas and thoughts. We always give more time to them. So I think to have some kind of procedure where we can give it time, and we give each other time, is, would be more helpful to me than just to think that 15 minutes at the end of every meeting is gonna do it for everybody.
Right. But see, the thing is, listen, I don't think we have that now in the current structure. I don't think we have time to talk about ideas. Like, maybe, I mean, okay, I, I know out of the box, everybody's gonna hate this, but maybe it's a separate meeting. Maybe it's two hours on a Wednesday, or, you know, or something where we talk about ideas. If there's no ideas to talk about, then we cancel it. But, you know, at least something where we could give actual attention to the ideas and talk about them. Because I don't, like, what you're describing, you know, I don't, I don't really think we have that now. Like, that's kind of the problem I'm trying to solve for. Like, how else could we do it?
So let me tie back to your thing about collaboration. I agree with you on that. I, I agree. And so that goes back to the comment I made 35 minutes ago, where I said I would come back to it. Maybe we build something into a roundtable that's, that is more free for, free form, is that the right word? More, more freeing, so that we can just talk about ideas and build off each other and have a little bit of freedom to do that. I, I do like the forms, though, because I think it gives us, the, it gives me, the ability to read the, I will tell you, I read this item wrong. I thought this was something to be open to the public, to also weigh in on and, and give feedback on. So I, I, I misread that. And so that's why this conversation, having the conversation is important. If you just tack this up on some board that I had to go look at on the website, I would, I would have been way off base on this. So it, it, I think it's important to have discussion and try to build off each other. Maybe that's what we don't do. We don't build off each other. We don't, we, I don't, I don't know how to solve that. But maybe we take the time when we submit ideas to really talk about them and not do the thumbs up and thumbs down. And I've always been the one to do this. But it's, something's not working, clearly, for all of us. So, does that help? Did you get anything out of, anything we've said for the last 45 minutes?
So, a suggestion, hearing, what I'm hearing, we have somewhat regular work sessions this year. Not every month, but many months. So what if we took an hour every other month and designated an hour of a Thursday work session for roundtable?
Perfect.
And then if you need it, you have the time to do it. And if you don't need it, you don't have to stay three hours that night. But we'll, we'll set aside an hour every other month in a work session for roundtable. And again, I, I think the flexibility that you may be looking for is, the form is helpful. But we don't necessarily have to say you can't talk if you didn't do a form. I mean, I think that's what I'm hearing from you, is that sort of flexibility to bring up other things. But I think also hear yourselves that it's helpful to some, if not all of you, to be able to process that in advance of sitting down at the table. But again, that's where you need to get some detail into that form to make sure everybody's on the same page. But is that a reasonable compromise? Well, that's it. If you don't like it, we can change it.
I like that a lot. And I like the idea of possibly doing the form whenever, and then staff takes a look at it and sends it out. And then fellow council members can essentially email just directly the initiator, who can create their own idea wall, where other people's ideas kind of make it better. It's kind of what I initially said, but not so public. And I think that's okay, because it's not deliberation, it's one way in reaction to an idea. So I, I would love to, like, have access to a mural wall to actually collect that stuff instead of just putting it, or you can make that Google form such that it can be edited after the fact. I'm not sure what, what that would look like.
I also do think, though, that if we're gonna, if we're gonna get sent ideas on a regular basis, I do think it would be nice if we all did our best to communicate something about that idea. Like, you, you see an idea in your inbox, you have some kind of reaction to it. Like, I think it would be nice if we really kind of went the extra mile to communicate that back to the person whose idea it was. If it's, you know, if it's positive, it's positive, it's negative, it's negative. But, you know, it helps the idea get better.
Yeah, it's cool, pick up the phone.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I don't care how, I'm just saying, like, you know.
Okay. So it sounds like we have consensus to include roundtable discussion every other month during a work session?
Sure.
Okay. And then we'll see how it goes. We'll see how it goes. We will open the Microsoft form so that you can open, you can submit items whenever. And before the meeting, we just evaluate which ones have been submitted so that we can share it with the rest of the council. So you, you two have the time to evaluate them before the discussion. It does.
I have an idea to kind of build in off what you're saying. So what about in the, the work session during the hour, we write our idea up on a, we each have our own little easel. You write up our idea, and then we go around so that it's not this, we're sitting around the table, interrupting each other. We go around to each person's easel and write down our comments.
Stickers. Put a dots, that's a best.
Or write down our comments, like, this is crap, or, or add, you know, whatever. And you go around and add your comments, and everyone's doing that at the same time, that everyone's ideas, that way we're not interrupting each other.
And it's like, we could, and it would really be efficient, too, because everybody's making comments at the same time.
Exactly. That, I like that. And it'll go, yeah, it's more efficient, it'll go faster.
Yeah.
And we're up and moving around.
Thumbs up on that idea?
Yes.
All right, we'll give it a whirl.
Okay. Anything else on the future of roundtable discussion?
Yeah, let's talk about that some more.
Red, red dot, I mean.
Okay. So let's move on to the, to the summary. The summary of the previously presented roundtable items is being provided to you as attachment number two on this agenda item. It does include updates for the items that we were able to complete updates on. I know, I know. All of those are highlighted in green. So this item, this summary is attached to the item. I can quickly go through it, or if you prefer for me to skip it, you can refer to it. Oh, I'm perfectly fine with that. I am perfectly fine with that. I would say, in the interest of time, since councilmember Rao had asked about the Gandhi statue, I will only cover that one. So the Gandhi statue, the last roundtable item, you direct the staff to continue the process of moving the statue to the Southern Lot. And you also directed staff to have the conversation with the statue sponsor, so that we can then explore their, their insights into moving the, the statue to the Southern Lot. I did meet with Arvin Shah. He was very excited to move the statue to the Southern Lot. He, we actually provided, presented him with multiple options of location where the statue could be. And based on the purpose and the intent for which the statue was brought here, he specifically preferred the Southern Lot to be the location, because it will give the statue more visibility. And they prefer the statue to be at a location which there's more children and more activity occurring, because it does honor what the message of the statue is. They do prefer to continue to have the same celebration that they have at the Marbles, which is they celebrate the Gandhi birthday around the October timeframe. So they would like to be able to have access to the facility to do that celebration. And we are currently in the process of designing the slab where the Gandhi statue will be placed. And the statue sponsor has agreed to pay for relocation costs of the statue. The town will pay for the cost of the slab and what it will take to just put it there. The town is also in the process of developing a policy that will allow us to receive the, the statue, because we currently do not have the public art policy, and it's important for us to have some policies around that. So we will come back to you with a policy in May. And we will also come back to council with an agreement between the town and the statue sponsor for the reimbursement cost of the relocation, but also to also have some language in there about their ability to conduct their event and being able to utilize the facility. I think that pretty much covers everything, given that we are moving in that direction and executing this. I, I will consider this item as complete in the sense that we will formalize it. So, questions? Mayor President Garamella?
Just to add to what you're saying, I really want to see the sponsorship policy, which has been going on for almost now, amount of time.
So a couple of different policies there. So the one that Giselle is talking about is a public art policy that will include acceptance of it, which is different from the sponsorship policy that we're developing. And then there's also a partnership policy that's a separate part, some rec concept. But we have a, we are close to a final draft, and I, I realize you've heard that for several months, I get that. We're trying to make sure that we are addressing the things that we know you'll ask about in that. So we're doing some additional outreach for support on that, but we, we'll have that coming forward as well. But the public art one will address the acceptance of the Gandhi statue.
And I will add a point of clarification to that. The public art policy will be specifically limited to receiving the donation of the statue. And I, and I say that limited in the sense that a public art policy can be very broad and include many things. And we do realize we do have a lot of opportunity in the public art arena. So we want to focus this first initial step of the policy to receive the statue in the interest of time, because we don't want to drag out the relocation of the statue until we have a full-blown-out public art policy. So it would allow us to have a, a policy, receive the statue, and continue our work on the public art arena.
Be moved by the fall, then, of this year?
We would like to, to have this relocation to occur prior to the celebration of the next birthday, which will occur in October. So ideally, we would like to have this occur during the summer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. I'm, I'm, I'm at a loss for words, believe it or not. I mean, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a quick question about the disc golf. Talked about the admin report, and the question was, would Wake County allow us to have disc golf at Church Street? And the answer was yes.
The answer on the admin report was yes. Yes. Any other questions on any of these items? And if you review it and you end up having any questions, you just reach out to me and we'll get you some answers. Well, then that completes roundtable.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Or I guess, when, when is, so when's the next one? You let us know? Okay, fair enough. Work session on Thursday? Not gonna be then.
Correct.
Just to be clear. Okay?
Are we allowed to tell the, are we allowed to tell the public that the statue's coming here? Would you prefer waiting until all these agreements are done? Okay. Just, just, okay, we'll just keep it between us.
Okay. So just before we take a quick break, we have a closed session this evening to discuss three matters, attorney-client privilege, personnel matters, and land acquisition. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to enter those three closed sessions.
Land acquisition.
I have a motion.
Second.
From councilmember Rao, a second from councilmember Abadi. All those in favor of entering closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously 7-0. It's 9:14. Let's please not go far, let's reconvene at 9:20. Really quick break, please. Thank you.